I'd like to say good evening to everyone. At this time, we will go ahead and get started with our meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome everyone who has come this evening to our meeting. We really appreciate your presence. First of all, what we want to do is go through our board norms and protocols. We will agree as board members to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for a district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. And with that being said, we will all stand and for the pledge of allegiance, after which we will have roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Westfall, our board clerk?
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Valdina Nguyen, present.
Stacy Yeager, here.
Thank you. We will now, I need to get a motion for us to approve the regular agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to move item number eight, the community comment section, up to number three on the agenda, following the recognitions and awards in the agenda, aligning with board policy on participation, public participation.
It's been moved and seconded that we move item eight to, what number did you say, again, please?
Number three, after recognitions and awards in the agenda.
Before or after number three?
After the awards and before the report.
Okay, before number three, as number three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we move item number eight to item three on our agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Discussion, sorry.
I would not be in favor of moving it because some people will be arriving late due to getting off of work, so we pushed it back to give people ample time to arrive that want to be here for others to speak. So I'll be voting no, so we can keep it there and allow people who are still coming to properly be able to get here.
And one of the other reasons that we relocated that was the purpose of making sure that some present information can be presented first before the community comments come up. But we will vote and make that decision, okay? Yes, ma'am.
Madam President, you always can acknowledge the people that are here and then reserve the right for them to speak when they do arrive. So there's always one or two ways to do something.
Okay. Any other comments? So with that suggestion by Dr. Nguyen, I'm going to go ahead and ask those individuals, as I call your name, would you please either raise your hand or stand up and acknowledge your presence here so that we will see how many are here? First of all is Carolyn Chambers, Joseph Macklin, Earl Watson, Angeline Howell, Carolyn Wyatt, thank you, Pastor Laron Thompson, thank you, and Anna Leo. Okay, so we do have three people who are not here yet, and the motion has been made, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Just a clarifying question then to Dr. Nguyen's point.
Okay.
If they do come later, can they still speak at the later part or?
If we agreed to do that, it would have to be down as number eight that's here.
Unless you modify your motion.
Okay. And how would you suggest that we modify it, Dr. Nguyen?
Well, however the maker the motion wants to modify it, that not putting any words into his mouth, not, eight is pretty far down, you can always, you can always say number five or number six is your call. There's always a way to modify a motion, as long as the one who's seconded agrees.
Correct?
Correct.
Mr. Lopez?
Sure, I will modify my motion to move number eight, community comment section, to go to number, number four, after the report of the superintendent, before the rest of the board update.
You agree?
I can go with that.
Okay. So the motion has been made that we would move item eight to item number four on our agenda. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You have a discussion?
No.
Okay, thank you. The ayes have it. It has been changed. Thank you.
Is there any opposed?
Anyone oppose? None. Thank you. So now we will go ahead with recognition and awards.
I have a couple of things to add.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to add two executive sessions for personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
So the motion has been made that we add two additional executive sessions for tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion?
I didn't have a second. You didn't have a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Could I get it seconded?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will make the change in adding two more executive sessions. Any discussion?
Are they both for non-elected?
Yes.
Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those oppose? Nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
I have one more request.
Okay.
I would like, under reports of the superintendent, to add a discussion on KESA, the Kansas Educational Systems Accreditation.
I have a question on that for clarity. I thought we went over that.
No, we have not.
Well, yes, we have. I thought we got a report, and then, I don't know if I should say, but we have talked about that twice.
We've never received the report. I had asked for it, and we put it off to the next meeting, and we've never discussed the report or talked about our outside visitation team.
The report, at the last request, was for them to come and present to us. That information was sent in. They could not come until April 15th, and I forwarded an email to everyone letting them know that. And so my question is, if they can't be here as what we wanted them to do, what do we need to discuss?
I have requested since November a copy of the outside visitation team's report, and I'm still requesting that. And we also do not have an outside visitation team as of last Wednesday, and that, we need to find out, the updates on that, how that is going. That is a requirement by the state for our school to be, district to be accredited. And I've asked several times for it to be on the agenda.
When we met two weeks ago, the information was presented, whereas the superintendent would go ahead and have them come and present the information so that we as a board would know. He reached out to them, they put the date off, they could not come at the time that we wanted them here. So therefore, we can't have the information to present to you until they do come.
The superintendent has a copy of the OVT report, and I do too. I obtained it last week, and I was going to share it with the rest of the board members.
Okay. So you've made that motion. I need someone to second it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we add the discussion on KESA. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Madam President?
Dr. Nguyen?
I have two motions, please, to add to the agenda. One, airing the board meetings on cable.
And what is the purpose of that?
To discuss why the meetings are not aired on cable.
Thank you. Could I get a motion?
That's the motion.
Can I get it seconded, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will have a meeting to discuss the airings of the board meetings on cable. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you have discussion, go ahead.
So to clarify, are we prepared to discuss that topic? Are you asking for an update?
No. I made a motion to put that on the agenda. That's all we're talking about.
Um.
So if the motion passed, then wherever we put it on the agenda, that's when we have that discussion.
Okay, 'cause I'm not sure if that person is prepared to speak on it or not, but I think it's important that we...
I think it's important that we have a discussion about that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you. And your second motion, please?
Second motion, to have a discussion on community conversation before the end of the school with the board and superintendent, a real community conversation.
And what is your suggestion? I need some clarity on that.
Comment, we don't, we don't, we don't have the ability to respond.
So you want...
We used to have community conversations, we used to have board listening tour, so now it's time, in my opinion, for us to identify at least two times before the end of semester, end of April, that we plan them open, open mic.
So that we schedule it to our...
Correct.
To the, for our meeting here?
Probably not at a regular board meeting.
Okay, or just set up a time in which they can come?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
I made the motion.
Thank you. Could I have it seconded, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we would have community conversation as a board for listening to the, to our community. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
You're welcome.
So now we're ready for recognitions and awards.
We have to make approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. Could I get a motion that we approve the regular agenda with the additions that have been added in?
I'll move.
Consent agenda piece, do I do that now or at the consent agenda?
To remove that?
Yes.
You can do it either way. We can do it now.
Okay. Madam President, I, for the purposes of abstaining on a vote on the consent agenda, I would like to pull out under agenda item six, letter E, I will be abstaining from that vote, and so I would like to pull that from the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Technically, just for the record, he's going to recuse himself from the vote.
Yes.
Abstaining is a no, but recuse means...
Thank you. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. So again, could I have the, a motion to approve the regular agenda?
I'll move with the additions.
With the, with the exception, with the additions that have been added in.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Now we're ready for recognition and awards.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to introduce our student of the month. Once a month, we get this opportunity to praise different students from different levels of our schools. We're excited about that. I'd like to bring our first winner up from the ECE. It's Aileth Miron Garcia from Morse Early Childhood.
She's so cute.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Chavez, and I'm an early childhood special education teacher at Morse.
My name is Gabriela Canno, and I am also an early childhood center teacher at Morse, and I will be translating for her parents.
All right. I wanted to nominate Aileth because in the past three years that I have known her, she truly has shown that she is a star student.
Queremos nominar Aileth porque ha enseñado en los últimos tres años que la hemos conocido que es una estudiante de estrella.
When she first came to our school, it was difficult for her to speak so that others could understand her. She first came to us just before her third birthday. Even though she might not be as old or as tall as the other students, and even though it was sometimes difficult for her to talk, she did not let that hold her back.
Cuando empezó, cuando primero empezó la escuela, era un poco difícil para que hable, para hablar y para que la entiendamos. Pero cuando primero vino, era apenas cuando iba a cumplir tres años, y aunque no era la más alta o la más grande de los estudiantes, nunca la dejó que la baje y puso su mejor esfuerzo.
Even of her first year at school, she was one of the youngest in the class, and she was still a leader. She would open the older children's mugs, and she would always point and show where everyone should line up. She was always smiling, and she always tried her best at every classroom activity.
Cuando empezó, que era la más joven, siempre era un líder, y siempre abría las leches para los estudiantes, le decía dónde necesitaban que estar, y siempre ponía su mejor esfuerzo en las actividades con una sonrisa.
Now, in her third year, she is able to communicate well and tell long detailed stories. This is because of the effort that she and her family both put into working on things and to having a can-do attitude.
Ahora que es su tercer año, ya puede hablar mejor, ya puede decir historias más largas y con detalles, y eso es por el esfuerzo que les puso su familia y ella que ella puede.
She is on track for kindergarten readiness, both academically and socially, and she continues to be a leader, gently offering to help others, and continuing to challenge herself to be the best she can be. We are so proud to have Aileth be a part of our classroom community.
Está lista para el kinder académicamente y socialmente, y sigue siendo un líder, que todavía le está ayudando a la gente y siempre se está poniendo su mejor esfuerzo. Estamos bien felices que está con nosotras Aileth y que está en nuestra clase.
Thank you. Thank you. (applause).
If we can please have the board members and our superintendent, please come in front for a picture.
She's so cute.
(inaudible).
Smile. Yeah, he's smiling. We're going to look here. One more. Thank you.[1072.15][1072.15](applause).
It is Jesse Dorrigues. Can we have the parents stand up, please? Aileth, if you're parents?[1147.83][1147.83](applause). And that's all right, we have Jesse's mother stand up as well, so we got two, two for one.[1157.61][1157.61](inaudible) thank you. Jesse, if you and your teacher would come up, please?
Hi, my name is Pam Herrick, and I am a third grade teacher at Carruthers Elementary. Jesse displays all the Carruthers values, to be safe, be respectful, and be responsible on a daily basis. He is so kind and caring for all of his classmates and everyone around him. Jesse is a very bright young boy who loves to read, solve math problems, and make connections to the world around him. I am proud of his accomplishments this year in third grade and look forward to see what he does in the future.
(applause). Smile. One more. (applause). Would I acknowledge the principal of his school, would you please stand up, please?
I would like to introduce our middle school winner, from Rosedale Middle School, Sasha Dodds.
I'm Rachael Lacus, and I have had Sasha in family advocacy and ELA class throughout this year. All of Sasha's teachers have observed her to be consistently respectful, a hardworking, talented, and curious student, and just as importantly, a kind, supportive, and thoughtful friend to her peers. We believe that in her humility, she does not always recognize that she is as special and capable as her peers and teachers know her to be. She is very deserving of this award, and my hope is this affirms for her what an awesome girl she is, and that her wonderful attributes and contributions are appreciated and don't go unnoticed. Congratulations, Sasha. We're proud of you.
(applause). Stand by, one more. Thank you.
And if we can also get a round of applause for Sasha's mother, she's here with her tonight, and her brother.[1355.83][1355.83](applause). And her principal, Mr. Helms. Our last winner is from the high school. He's from Washington High School, and it's Kendon McLean II.
Good evening, Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Dr. Faust. Please allow me the pleasure of introducing our nominee for the KCKPS High School Student of the Month, Kendon McLean II. Kendon is currently a high school senior at Washington High School, and is a native son of Wyandotte County. Kendon's extracurricular activities include jazz band, marching band, and the Washington High School Senior Board. Kendon is also an accomplished composer, having completed 20 arrangements that have been performed during halftime field shows, including the KCKPS marching band festivals for the last two years running. Although Kendon was a trained percussionist from the age of five, he also plays the piano, bass guitar, tuba, and trombone. In his free time, Kendon enjoys playing music with his friends and watching The Simpsons.[1433.23][1433.23](laughing). His post-secondary plans include attending a four-year university with a major in music education, and get this, Kendon's goal is to eventually return to this community and begin a career as a high school band director.[1446.83][1446.83](applause). In addition to his obvious artistic talent, Kendon exhibits characteristics of high moral character as a matter of routine. It is well-known among his high school staff that Kendon is quick to protect others from being bullied, available to help students find their way around the campus, and has consistently been a friendly mentor to underclassmen at Washington High School. I want to express how much it reaffirms my belief in our district mission when I encounter and get the privilege to publicly recognize a student whose pursuit of excellence is outmatched only by his drive to protect the dignity of the powerless and confront injustice where it exists. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Kendon McLean II.[1491.86][1491.86](applause).
Everybody ready? Come here. Smile. One more. Thank you.
If we can also, if we can also take a second to, to honor his parents and his family that is in attendance tonight?[1536.51][1536.51](applause). And Dr. Pitch is representing the administration for Washington, so thank you to Dr. Pitch.[1551.51][1551.51](applause). Mr. Herrera, I did not see you in the back. Can you please stand up?
Thank you, guys.
Good evening, board, Madam President, Dr. Faust. I'm here to announce our employee of the month for February 2020, who is Jennifer Spurgeon. And I'd like to also call up Amy Loveland, who was the nominator for Jennifer.[1583.15][1583.15](applause).
Good evening. My name is Amy Loveland, and I am the principal at NCO ECC. And as my staff met last month to discuss potential students of the month and employee of the month nominees, it was unanimous that we felt that Ms. Jennifer, one of our bus drivers, was the best candidate for an employee of the month nomination. So, on behalf of the whole staff at NCO ECC, Ms. Jennifer ensures a positive environment on her bus. She has decorations and motivational signs, and is always kind in her words and demeanor. She goes out of her way to take special care of each child and really gets to know them and their family. It's very clear that she loves our littles, even when they're having a hard day. And we're an early morning school, so sometimes they're having a hard day. Transportation can be scary for preschoolers. It's not only their transition away from their families, but buses are often an unfamiliar experience for little kids. She's calm and caring, and she puts them at ease. She helps everyone feel positive about their first school experience. That's our job and our mission, and Ms. Jennifer helps us make it possible every day.
Wow.[1665.01][1665.01](applause). All right. Look at me.
Yeah.
Stand by, one more. Smile. All right.[1672.01][1672.01](applause).
Now we're ready for employee of, I'm sorry, we're ready for presentation of check by Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legal Legacy Foundation for Mind Up Curriculum Grant.
Good evening, Madam President, board, Dr. Faust.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to see you again. If you remember, I mentioned on Saturday that I had the pleasure of introducing Tammy Collinsworth. We were awarded a second grant opportunity from Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation. I want to give them the opportunity to speak to the board and present this check. We're very grateful and honored, and I appreciate the time to present this grant award to you.
Thank you.
Great. And thank you, Lisa, for all the hard work that you put into the application to the foundation for these funds. We're very pleased to be here today. We represent Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation. Those of you who have been around this community for a while might remember Baptist Medical Center and Trinity Lutheran Hospital. They sold to a for-profit, but their foundation assets that funded the programs and equipment purchases that those hospitals made for many years, those foundations spun off to be... purchases that those hospitals made for many years, those foundations spun off to be who we are today. So we have assets available, not only for this program, but also for nursing scholarships. And we have a program called Kansas City's Medicine Cabinet that helps people get access to medical care. And I know that a lot of folks in the audience know about that. But these are grants from our Legacy Grants for Student Health Program. We've invested over a half a million dollars into the community in the last three years and you've actually received it all three years, just to be careful. And, and so we've invested over a half million dollars over the past three years into the community, 11 different school districts, and this year we added two charter schools as well. Those, those dollars go toward the purchase of asthma treatment supplies, mental health training for anti-bullying and anti-suicide efforts, and also for the purchase of health screening equipment. And the different districts and schools get the opportunity to choose what they would like to spend those funds on. So we're absolutely delighted to be here today, thrilled to be working with this district and we appreciate everything that the board does. I know it was recently School Board, National School Board Week and, and I want to know, I want you to know that your sacrifices and time do not go unnoticed by those of us in the community, so thank you.
Thank you.
But again, happy to be here and, and congratulations to Kansas City Kansas Public Schools for continuing to do a great job with health.
Thank you. Again, we'd like to thank Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation for just thinking of us and giving us what we can do to help our young people to be successful, because student success is what it's all about. We are now ready for the reports of the superintendent.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item, an update on the educational partnership with the District Attorney's Office as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam President, Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It is indeed a pleasure to speak with you all tonight and all that are in attendance. I wanted to give an update on the partnership that we have with the DA's office. As a Wyandotte High School graduate, it was at Wyandotte High School and a teacher there when I was 14-years-old that introduced me to the criminal justice system in a positive way, that had a huge impact onto where I am today. What my office is handing you is a letter that we recently released to all of the educators in your district and across Wyandotte County to show the importance of our commitment to our children. I'll begin with, high school dropouts are 47% more times likely to be incarcerated than peers of a similar age who have a degree.
Thank you.
Forty-seven percent. In our prisons right now, over half of the individuals that are in prison did not receive a high school diploma or GD. This absolutely struck me when I came into office and directed me to choose to invest more in education rather than mass incarceration of our children. And so with that, we have created the Educational Crime Prevention Initiative, which gives scholarship funds to our students here in Wyandotte County. This is the first time that the District Attorney's Office has ever done this. We gave five, $500 scholarships to students from Wyandotte County and we are also giving a $500 scholarship to a class, and this one is just now being announced today. So for our educators and for our teachers, they can go to our website or they can call our office and speak with Jonathan Carter to apply. As our teachers who are in the classroom are our number one partners to prevent our students from becoming criminals. As a part of that crime prevention avenue, we have partnered with not only you all, but with every teacher around Wyandotte County to make sure that they are conscious and aware of the pitfalls that the criminal justice system holds for them, which is why we've created the BOLD Mentoring Program, B-O-L-D-D, Brilliant Outstanding Leaders Determined to Be the Difference. My, I'll take that one. We have 27 Assistant District Attorneys who have been in the schools mentoring, speaking and educating our young folks on what crimes will get them caught up. And so I want to tell you all what those crimes are so that we can encourage our students not to fall in that area. The number one crime that our young people here in Wyandotte County are being charged with in my office is theft. That's a felony theft. That's because they're stealing something out of somebody's class, somebody's book bag or whatnot. Over $500, it's a misdemeanor, over $1,000, it's a felony crime. The second thing is battery. And battery, though it may be a misdemeanor, it is a violent crime. And we have charged battery for students on students, students on teachers and students on law enforcement. And those two crimes are affecting a lot of our young people and it's something that I want to bring to your attention so that we can make sure that our students are aware. The last thing that is extremely important is sexting. Sexting is, I, I know it's an in thing to do, however, it is a registrable sex crime that our students will receive a felony on their record and they will have to register as a sex offender for the rest of their life. So me being here is to say thank you for partnering with us, thank you for allowing us to try to be preventative, but it's also to educate you all on the pitfalls that if our students come into the criminal justice system, it is extremely difficult for them to get out. And so we have diversion programs to try to make sure that they do not have these things permanently on their record, but I will tell you, a vast majority of them fail the diversion and it ends up on their record. So if you take nothing away from this, please take away that we appreciate the work that you're doing. Education is the only thing that is really going to prevent our students from becoming criminals in our county and, and let me change that, education and some good involvement from our parents to keep them out of the criminal justice system. And I am doing my best to make sure that we know that. And lastly, when we know that, that our students are committing crimes, theft, or riding in the car with the wrong person, or parents, I'll, I'll say it, look at your kid's cell phone, because if somebody else looks at it, then it's a crime and I have to charge it and my hope is that we do not. So thank you for this time, thank you for this opportunity and I hopefully I did not take too long.
I'd ask that the Board accept as an update from Dr. Diane Clemens, Executive Director on Future Leaders Outreach Network, Pursuing My Dreams Eagle Club Project that's submitted by Dr. Lynette Hook, Deputy Superintendent recommended by myself, Charles Faust, Superintendent of Schools.
Working on somebody else's computers. On behalf of Future Leaders Outreach Network, our Board of Directors, the young people that we serve, middle and high school students started from grade five, and our staff, thank you for the work that you do, Superintendent, Board members, Deputy Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent and all the key leaders here in the community. I'm providing an update on the work that we have done in the school district. We celebrated 20 years last September. Last school year, we were at three schools and, and these three schools included, and that's our Board members that are there, was Washington High School, FL Slago and Northwest Middle School. The mission of Future Leaders Irish Network is to provide adolescents and adults with skills that empower them to set goals, become effective leaders, pursue economic well-being and to make healthy choices. The name of the program is Pursuing My Dreams Eagle Club Project. And the purpose is to transform young people who are followers to be leaders and leaders into change agents who through their purpose will make a significant impact. We say at Future Leaders Irish Network, they are the future emerging and aspiring global leaders and entrepreneurs. To date, we have served over 377,000. We've been in this school district, I am a product or a protege, not a protege, but a alumni of the school district here in Kansas City, just a little nervous, that's not like me. But I graduated from Wyandotte High School in 1973 and also went to Northwest Middle School where we're currently implementing the program. Our goal is to help young people to set behavior boundaries from drugs, alcohol, violence, all forms of violence, to include bullying, as well as teen pregnancy prevention. So Mr. Dupree, when you mentioned about sexting, that is one of the things that we teach young people about sexting. A lot of them do not know that it is a crime. So we share that with the young people through our curriculum. The slogan is Leaders Are Like Eagles Soaring to Reach the Top. And the programs we have is Pursuing My Dreams, Young Leaders of Distinction, Caring Adults Network, which is a parent involvement program. And currently there is a grant that we're going to be writing, so I'm going to be getting with someone at school district level. We had this grant before with the federal government, it was a $4 million grant and they're wanting to target more parents, so the partners with parents would be a great fit to collaborate with the school district, so I'm going to be working on that pretty soon as well. And then we're also going to form the Kansas City Family Community Mobilization Initiative. That is to pull together communities, schools and faith-based organizations so that we can make a significant impact and saturate this community with young people who are making good decisions, young people who are desiring to pursue their dreams. And I'm going to show you later on in the presentation, some vision boards that young people put together at Northwest Middle School. Our curriculum is Pursuing My Dreams, Let My Journey Begin, Pursuing My Dreams, I Can Do It. We're currently teaching the last six modules of this curriculum and the program ties in with the social studies standards of the Kansas City Kansas School District. Character development, leadership development, career planning, in which we teach young people to set boundaries to pursue their dreams. So last year during the project school year period, 2018-2019 at Slago, 178 freshmen were served. At Washington, 275 night graders participated and completed the program. Northwest Middle School, last year, 460, grade seven through eight. And also we did the summer school program and the grand total was served was 945,000. Our program is funded by the federal government, the Family Youth Services Bureau, and they are releasing some more funding and it's our hope, you know, that we get funded again and I'm pretty optimistic that we will because we do great work. Now this here's the history success of our program. Our program, once implemented, when you see the star there, Arrowhead Middle School, and while this is dated and information is still good information because it is an informed proposed plan that is going to be rigorously evaluated and due season, so it can end up on an evidence-based list. So we were in J.C. Harmon Central Middle School and Northwest Middle School. And as a result of all the surveys that were administered, pre and post surveys, all 26 survey items were statistically significant. We submitted our evaluation report and when we submitted it six weeks later, it was approved and published in the American Journal's Health Studies. And that is a milestone, you know, that's, you know, kind of rare, you know, when you submit it and get approved that quickly. If I could get someone to hand this out and give it to the Board and to the. It's one thing to talk to young people about saying no to drugs and alcohol and all forms of violence and teen pregnancy, not having sex, but it's another thing to say yes to your dreams. So when we teach young people about pursuing their dreams, we're teaching them career planning, job readiness, financial literacy, true colors, unlocking your potential to deal with the self-worth and the self-esteem. And so this is just some of the survey items that are on the survey. Having a clear vision plan for my future helps me to stay focused. Reaching my dream goals requires making good choices. And all this supports and add values to the core standards of the social studies programming that is taught throughout the state of Kansas. I understand the importance of good credit score, that ties in with financial literacy. An entrepreneur is a person who starts a business, a lot of young people in the class that I'm teaching, Mr. Henderson's class at Northwest Middle School, and I have four other staff and contractors who are also teaching there at the school, that they are sharing with me that a lot of young people are wanting to own their own business, start their own business. So here's some of the results from the pre and post survey that we administered last year. While we're still new in the system and also dealing with some other barriers that we had to deal with the first year, I wanted to show the success of our program, being an evidence-based model program that's yet to be, you know, classified as such, but we're on our way to being established as an evidence-based program. So there were two items on the pre-post survey that were statistically significant and that was, I understand the importance of good credit and entrepreneur is a person who starts a business. This was at Northwest Middle School. At FL Slago, there were three items that showed significant improvement and that was, I believe it's important for teens who are having sex to choose to return to a lifestyle without sex. I know how to complete an employment application, which is so very important, to fill out an application and know the importance of filling out the application. So when we go back into the schools in a couple of weeks, we'll be teaching young people how to dress when they go to interview, how to write a resume, the importance of a thank you letter, the importance of a cover letter, and there's videos that we're going to support them with that and they'll have an opportunity to fill out an application and do some mock interview if time permits. And the third significant outcome improvement was an entrepreneur is a person who starts a business. At Washington High School, there were also three significant outcomes at Washington High School. So I want to show this because we have an office in Arlington, Texas, and we're in the Dallas-Fort Worth area and we've been there since 2015, after taking a four-year sabbatical. So my staff is doing quite well down in Texas. All 26 survey items, all 13, I'm sorry, all 13 survey items as relates to the career expiration were statistically significant, so that's a milestone for us in, in Texas. At the end of the program, students will receive a certificate of completion, the graduation ceremony that would be held in the classes. Last year we gave out backpacks at Northwest Middle, t-shirts at Washington and a portfolio that you each will receive one, since we're not at Slago, hoping to get back in Slago, a portfolio that you each receive one. If I don't have enough, I have to bring some back if we have a couple boxes left, but I want to give that to you from our organization. Now, to conclude, last week, the sixth and eighth grade, sixth and seventh, eighth graders put together their own vision board. We was teaching them about mapping their own future, mapping what their focus and purpose is. So we brought in the poster boards, the markers, the glue, lots of pictures and magazines and young people were so happy and excited to put together their vision boards. A lot of them said, yes, I want to be a millionaire, but I said, you know what, your academics is going to have to be the first and foremost thing that you focus on. If you don't do good in your academics, you cannot be as successful as you desire to be. So I tie it back to academics. So here's just some of the young people who were sharing and showing off their vision board. I'm teaching in Mr. Henderson's classroom 28 and you see those smiles on their face? Let's give them a round of applause, even though they're not here. It's also Mr. Henderson's class, so the young people are just really excited and happy and we had them rolled up and I told them, don't use those poster boards as weapons now because they were doing all this. I said, if you do, I'm going to go tell the principal on you. So Mr. Flores' class here, my project coordinator is in that classroom 28 at Northwest Middle School, there's Mr. Flores in the back, back there. There's some more photos of young people just really displaying what they want to do and what they see themselves having in the future, whether it's a house, an apartment, going to college. Every one of the students except for maybe about three or four out of the Thursday, Friday class, their desire is to go to college. And I said, even while you're in the sixth grade right now, you don't know what college you want to go to, make sure by the time you get to high school, ninth grade, you've done some research, okay? And so they said that they would. I want to thank you and again, we're looking for an opportunity to continue to expand our program. There are some grant opportunities that are out now, so as the grant writer, if you can let me know who that person is, I'd like to sit down and talk with them so that we can see how we can partner and bring some resources so we can continue to do the work and expand to do the work. So I want to thank you again for this opportunity. So I want to thank you again for this opportunity.
Dr. Clemmons, before you leave, I want to thank you so much for what you're doing in our community. When you brought this to us, you had a big vision. You came to our sessions that we had in the community and said, I want to give back to help our community. So I thank you so much for your dedication, your staff dedication, and giving back to our students because it is making a difference. I've heard lots of great things about what you're doing, so again, thank you so much for what you're doing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The passion that you have is evident in how you present, and you're just taking it and passing it on to our students.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I expect them to be gentlemen's.
We also want to encourage the parents to, at those schools, to pass the word on to others so that they can have more involved.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item a report on the three-year trend of the September twentieth audit student head count submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Faust, and Board Members, good evening.
Good evening.
I was asked to look at our audit student head count, so I pulled together what it was for the past three years. And as you can see, we are a growing community far as our head count for kids. We have grown from twenty-one thousand nine hundred nine kids to twenty-two thousand three hundred kids over the past three years, and these head counts are used to what calculate our state aid that we get from the state. And if you have any questions.
Any Board Members?
I would like to see the report that the state sent you last week with the breakdown of the head count and the ratings and everything.
Yes, ma'am.
What? I didn't hear.
The head count, the state report that was sent. He wants to see that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I can get turned to that report.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm next, too.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item a report on the selection of a demographer and intended scope of work as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
As I bring that PowerPoint up, as you all know that we're facing a crisis here with some overcrowding of schools, and you all asked that we go out and get a demographer and see if we can get a look at how our county looks today. So I interviewed a couple of demographers, one being RSP, who's a local consultant out of Overland Park, and we also interviewed a consultant out of Florida called MGT. And we decided to go with the RSP proposal due to his familiarity of our district. If those that were possibly on the board before the bond, this group was hired to do some work for our district, and so with the urgency that we need to get work done, we decided to go ahead and listen to the RSP proposal. This team is led by Mr. Robert Schwartz, and as you can see, they got lots of years of experience in planning, education, and GIS, and they have lots of clients here in the Midwest, so they're very knowledgeable of this area of the country. As you can see, these are all the clients that they have in this area, and if you look on the Kansas side, they've done work in Lawrence, Leavenworth, Piper, Wichita, and Kansas City, Kansas. How do they make a difference? As I was interviewing both firms, I sort of listened and done the research, and this is what I found to be RSP's difference, and I won't read them all to you, but what made it most advantageous for me was their academic achievement and their student opportunities that is their bottom line. Throughout our conversation, that's all we talked about was how what their work does is going to influence our academic achievement. So what do we want them to do? Next year, for next year that they're going to start, this year, we need to look at the New Chelsea area. As you all know, we're opening up another school, new school there, and based on the population of the school that's moving into the New West Park Elementary, it's not going to be at capacity. So we have an opportunity to move some students out of New Chelsea over that way, which, you know, is not just a one move, it's going to be a domino effect. So we need the RSP team to look at our enrollment analysis, our boundary analysis, and also to facilitate our discussions when we go out to the community and come up with a recommendation. And as you can see, I have a potential cost that we've had, we're still working on, but the proposed cost for the enrollment analysis is thirty-five-five, the boundary analysis is six thousand, and to do the facilitation of our community meetings, it's thirty-five-hundred per meeting with a minimum of three meetings, a max of five. Or if we need more, we'll be doing more. Next year, and it's going to take a year to do the whole district, so we will be doing the study with implementation for the whole district in the year, school year twenty-twenty-one. No, twenty-one, twenty-two. I'm sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two, in school year. Same type work, they will be updating our enrollment analysis. As you can see, the cost for the enrollment analysis has decreased because we would do most of the work, studying the New Chelsea area, and we also have our boundary analysis and our facilitation of meetings grew from five to seven because we're going to be talking about the whole district, and so we're going to need more meetings once we decide, come up with a proposal, and ready to take it back as to our recommendations, and listen to the public, and then bring it to you all for final recommendations. Are there any questions?
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
The last time we did boundary adjustments, we worked really closely with transportation.
Yes.
Will they be working with our transportation department?
Yes, they'll be working with transportation facilities because we've got to do a capacity analysis on all our schools, even though we had built the schools with so many number of classrooms, over time, though some of those classrooms have been converted to other rooms or other rooms have been converted to classrooms. So the Building Services Department will be doing our capacity analysis, and we will also be looking at the transportation zones to make sure that we don't increase our transportation budget a lot, but still do what's best for children.
Yeah, I didn't realize how complicated it was last time until Ms. Miller sat down with us and said, well, you know, you can't just take part of the kids from this apartment complex, you have to take all of them.
You've got to take them all.
So I just wanted to make sure that they were going to work closely with that department.
Yes.
Thank you.
And when you start changing an elementary school, it feeds to a change in a middle school, it feeds to a change in a high school. So that's why we've got to look at the whole district, even though we're concentrating on the New Chelsea area.
And just for clarity, because I want to make sure I'm understanding, when you say New Chelsea or region, does that include Northwest? Because even with the new school, they're already overpopulated, and then with the new school, that's still an issue. So when you say New Chelsea or region, because you've got New Chelsea, which is going to feed in to Northwest that's overcrowded, and even with Gloria Willis, it seems like they're overcrowded, so I, you know...
We will do a comprehensive analysis
Okay.
of any proposed change that if we move kids out of New Chelsea, it will lower the kids going into Northwest, but where those kids go depends on which elementary school we assign them to, because they could be Frank Rushton, should be over at West Park. So once we get all that ironed out as a recommendation, we will bring it back to the Board for you all to review, and then we will go out into the community to discuss what we propose.
Okay, but again, just for clarity, they're already overcrowded, you know, what are we going to do with that? Are we dealing with that, too? Because they're going into the new school next year, but they're already overcrowded.
The New West Park is not overcrowded.
No, I'm talking about Northwest is already at about...
Right. That's, that's true.
Okay, so I'm just saying, there's a concern, and you hear that, to make sure that we address, they're already overcrowded, and I know you're going to deal with the New Chelsea or region, but we got to make sure...
But if we move kids out of New Chelsea, that will lower the number of kids that's going into Northwest. And so hopefully, that, that will help alleviate some of the problems in the Northwest. But then, when we do the whole district, we will be looking at really fully using all the...
Middle schools.
All the middle schools and try to balance out our population, so we're not overcrowded, but that's going to take a year to get accomplished. But yes, we will be looking at the Northwest going into the new school area.
Thank you, Dennis, because, you know, when the, when it was proposed seven years ago to use the recommendations of the demographer, that recommendation was not adopted by the Board, which is resulting in some of this situation. So we are growing based upon your trends of about a hundred and fifty, or we could even get two hundred more students this new school year added.
Yes.
So I'm sure that based upon feedback, you will be taking that into consideration as well.
Right. There's lots of factors that go into when you do the demography study, because what I was told, there's a couple of apartment complexes that are scheduled to reopen that's surrounding some of our schools.
Yep.
And that will call the shift in enrollment for those schools, and one of them's very large, and it could put over a hundred and fifty kids back into one of our schools that's right behind it.
Also, so we did save money. You reported that we saved thirty million. So some community members are thinking, hey, we can just use this money to build a new school or to build resources. Would you explain what that money cost savings, what we legally can do with that money, and what situations the Board may have to make a decision on so that we can make accommodations?
Okay, let me try to explain it. Okay, like when you, when you refinance your home and you lower your interest rate and you lower the amount of time you have to pay for the home, it generates cost savings, and those cost savings in the governmental world are in our capital budget. And so what that would mean, that we could possibly lower our meal rate of our capital budget and increase the meal rate on the operations budget by keeping the total meal rate flat. And that's how you're able to move those savings to influence your operating budget. It's not like you can shift thirty million dollars. That thirty million dollars is over an extended period of time, but it's, it's only going to generate dollars if you're able to lower your meal rate on your capital side and increase it on your operational side.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
You did say that this is the company that we used back for the bond issue.
Yes, ma'am.
And they also did one for us in two thousand and six, I believe.
Did RSP also do some work in two thousand and six? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this will be the third time around, they're very familiar with us?
Yes, very familiar.
Okay.
They still have a lot of files on our district.
That's good.
Sir?
Yes, ma'am.
So what, what kind of format is the data going to be in to present to us and to present to the community meetings?
I will have to work with RSP, but it would be more likely the maps and which communities that we're going to propose that moves and how many kids that's going to affect, and the ripple effect of those moves. That's why I think the proposal coming to you guys will look like, but I will be working with the consultant to make sure that it's clearly understood by Board and community.
And will you have, will we have the opportunity to make some adjustments?
Oh, yes, ma'am. What I will bring to you will be just a proposal.
Well, you know, sometimes y'all get a little nervous when we make suggestions.
Not I. I'm bringing you a proposal. Bringing you a proposal, every decision is the Board's decision, so when you make it, I can sit down.
Good point, good point. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item an update on the status of the curriculum resources as submitted by Matthew Anderson, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Madam President, Dr. Faust, I appreciate your time this evening. Tonight, I wanted to just give you an update of our overall status of our curriculum resources. Tonight, we're not asking to adopt anything, but we wanted you to be aware of where we are with our curriculum resources in general. So, my PowerPoint is not... And I know we've been, we've got a busy schedule ahead of us, so I'm going to try to do this as quickly as possible. So to start us off, strategic priorities. Our number one goal in our department is to ensure that we have the necessary resources in our teacher, teachers' hands and that they can do adequate instruction to ultimately increase our student achievement. Any purchase that we make in our department, our overall goal is to ensure that we're using those resources, those financial resources, in a fiscally responsible manner. We also want to ensure that we are purchasing materials that are not way above price or way below price. We're looking for what's the best product out there for our kids. And then finally, in order to retain highly qualified staff, if we don't have the necessary materials in our classrooms, it's really hard to keep people here. They need the necessary materials to teach their students. Why are curriculum resources so important? As a district, our goal is to ensure that every child has access to a high-quality, guaranteed viable curriculum. So one of the things that research shows is that if we have those materials in our teachers' hands, our instruction can be better. We can increase our student achievement. So therefore, as a system, we need to continuously look at what we have available and what we need to do to put the right things in our teachers' hands. I'm going to bring back some data that David Rand shared a couple of weeks ago. As you can see, we made some growth. We made some gains in mathematics over the last three years. One of the things you'll notice is, the graphs are a little tricky to read here. On the left-hand side, the elementary math goes up by ten percent increments. The right-hand side, the secondary math goes up by two percent increments. So I don't want you to get confused on like how the lines all work out. You'll notice that we did have statistically significant raises in our elementary, and we had raises in secondary, it just wasn't as high as our elementary. One of the reasons for that is we need to ensure that we have up-to-date resources in the classrooms.
Yes.
So what you see here is a breakdown of how we have our high school and middle school and elementary, and they go in order for how we're going to come to you in the next few weeks as we start proposing what we need in our buildings. So for example, in high school, the last adoption was in two thousand and ten. In two thousand and ten, if you're familiar, that was when the Common Core state standards were released. In two thousand and seventeen, the state of Kansas revised those standards, so we're already behind the eight ball here. And so that's our first proposal. And then high school, we also have new courses. We were tasked with increasing the amount of fourth-year math courses. Every student in high school needs to have four years of math, and so we increased the amount of courses that we'll have available for our students. And so you'll notice, those are all new courses for twenty-twenty-one. Middle school, the last adoption was in twenty-three, twenty, thirteen, fourteen, and you'll notice on the side, how many students does that impact? Elementary, we did an adoption in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, and that affected ten thousand six hundred kids. And if you look at our math data in elementary, you can tell by putting high-quality resources in our teachers' hands can have an impact along with high-quality professional development. So it, it will help us increase our student achievement. English Language Arts, same thing, they do go up by five percent on both sides. You'll notice that we have higher rates of proficiency in our elementary grades than we do in our secondary grades. One of the reasons, as we look, we notice that we currently don't have a curriculum resource identified in our high schools. We use novels, and novels aren't making the difference right now. So we want to ensure that we have a high-quality curriculum resource in their hands. That was done in two thousand and fourteen when we did our first novel purchase. Middle school, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Again, go back, when was Common Core introduced? In two thousand and ten, the state revised their standards in two thousand and seventeen. So again, we're behind, so we need to ensure that we have those resources for our teachers and students. We have high school electives. I wasn't going to list them all, there's a lot of electives. If you would like that, I can send that to you, give you the dates of those as well. And then our elementary K three, we did an adoption for those materials in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, and third grade did have the highest increase in their student achievement rates. Science. Science, I don't have a pretty graph for this one, I apologize. But you, you can see the 2017 to 2019 state assessment result. The state assessment is given to fifth graders, eighth graders, and 11th graders in science. As you can tell, we've kind of flatlined in science. There was a 3% increase from 2018 to 2019. Our science curriculum instructional coaches have really been pushing to ensure that our teachers understand the national, not national, next-generation science standards, thank you. The next-generation science standards, which were adopted in 2013. So we want to make sure that we have those things. So here's what it looks like from that end. You'll look back at middle school, the last time we adopted something was in 2005, 2006. That's 15 years ago.
Yeah.
It's too long. So we want to ensure that we have the proper materials in our teachers' hands. 2010, 2011, I think I was in my second or third year of teaching, and that's when the science came out with resources. So those are the two that we would propose for an adoption for next year. And then we'd hit our high schools and our high school electives, the 21, 22 school Finally, social studies. You'll notice, middle school, again, we haven't adopted anything in a really long time. And that affects 5,200 students. Our social studies text at elementary, we did a text set, we made units of study. Those were done in 2014, and then you'll notice the rest of them here. It ranges anywhere from 2008 all the way to 2016. Our World Languages program, we're behind. The last adoption we did for any World Language courses was in 2004, 2005. We currently have hired an individual to help us with curriculum. Unfortunately, we can't have them in our department yet. We did not want to take them out of the classroom, because World Languages is a hard-to-fill position. And so to ensure we didn't put a hardship on the building and on those students, we decided we would help, or we would have this individual help us develop curriculum along the way. So therefore, we're not proposing anything for next year, but definitely the year after that. So we want to make sure we can amp up our World Languages program. So how much is this all going to cost, you ask? So here you'll notice, elementary, middle, high school, all the way down to science, it's $2.6 million for all those materials. I can give you the details of that when we bring these to you, but I wanted just to give you an idea, most of these proposals that we've acquired from the publishers are multi-year contracts with initial professional development included in there. So what's my concern? Our concern is, our current budget is only $900,000. If you look at what our proposed amount for the resources currently is, is 2.5, we're at $1.7 million short of what we need. So our goal is to ensure that we work with the financials department to ensure that we can find more resources, more funding to purchase these materials. Our goal would be that we, you know, we have such a big gap to fill, we need to spend a little more money upfront to try to close this gap. And so our goal is that we would put a gap fill for three years, so by the fourth year, we can be back and living within our means. So that's kind of what we're discussing here. So what are our next steps? If we can't find more money, our goal is to prioritize all of those things that we've asked, that we'd like to ask for, and it would be based on data. Currently, the data is telling us, we need something in our middle schools and high schools. That's where the data is telling us, our kids aren't performing as well as they should. So, that's where we start. And then I ask my friend Dennis to come up and share something from the finance department.
So how do we pay for the resources we need this year? As Matt said, we have $900,000 currently, but that still leaves us to 1.7 short. So how do we propose to close that gap? As you all know, there are this source of funds called lap salaries, where if we don't have 100% employed on day one, the dollars associated with those lap salaries does not go spent. So, once we calculate that, we will have a proposal as to that we should use part of those funds to close this gap for this year. I have no idea what's that going to be right now, because we have not done the analysis that will be in the May 1 timeframe, first week of May, and we'll be bringing our proposal back to you guys, and hopefully we can put a dent in this gap. Now, they would then prioritize the, what's under the $900,000 that they can afford and spend down to that level.
Mr. Covington? For clarity, you called, did you say it was the lap or?
Lapsed.
Lapsed.
It's called lapsed salary. And for the out years, as you all know, the district has a fund balance, pretty lofty. You can, as a board, decide that you want to use those dollars on one-time purchases to close these gaps, but that will be a board decision. Also, as you all know, the state is looking at each district's fund balance, and they say ours is too high. So this will be a viable option, because you should only use fund balance for one-time purchases, and this will be a viable option for your fund balance. All right, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
One question. It says, elementary science, one-third of materials.
To help on the cost savings of that, we would do, they come in modules of three. So you have life, physical, and earth science. Our goal would be that we would phase that in over the course of the next three years. So one-third of that would be phased in this year, and we would look at our current resource and see, how is it meeting the standards? Whichever unit of study is really struggling to meet the standards, that's where we would start. So we'd be using more data to ensure that we, we pick the right things to put out there.
So you're actually getting the full program just over three years instead of right up front?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt, for having the curriculum book review, your department. You invited the board to come and look at the curriculum along with the teachers and give feedback. And while I was in there, there were teachers saying what you were saying. We had, we do not have a book, we have to go online to find our resources. And I said, you don't have a book to go through, you don't have resources, explain to me more. So thank you for your staff reaching out to clarify those questions, because I'm not sure if the board was aware that we were lacking resources, and also how out of date they were. In the academic world, it's very important that if we want to be the top 10 district in the country, top 10 district in Kansas, we've got to change our curriculum. We have the cream of the crop at each of our schools. At each of our schools, we have the best students. So my question to you is, or maybe Dennis, if we do use the fund balance to get everything we need this one time, what would Moody's impact be on us? What could the repercussions be on the board if we piece it out rather than saying, let's just go ahead and give our staff what they need this one time?
Based on the last time we had that Moody's studies, if your fund balance drops, it, it does create a negative rating on your bond rating. We're not going out for a bond next year, that I know of, because we haven't started, you know, publicizing one. So it will cause a drop on your Moody's rating, but I would tell you, Moody's is not the only bond rating agency out there. This district had decided to use Moody's, but there are others.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
As a frame of reference for me, how often do we do other, how often should we change our curriculum? I'm trying to put a frame of reference here.
So, that should be done frequently. And so one of the things, when I, yes, I know, when I took this position in July, one of the things I wanted to do was ensure that we had a cycle of adoption, and that wasn't in place when I took this position. So something that my colleague Susie Legg and I have been doing is looking at every resource that we have, looking at what the copyright date is, looking at what or when was the last adoption, ensuring that we, how we prioritize this is done in the best way possible. And so one of the other things that we would do along with that cycle is ensure that we have a program review. And so we'd work with David Rand and his department to ensure that the resources that we have put out there, if we have them for three years, those, over that three years, we would do some data review, making sure that if they're having an impact, then we can make the determination, yes, we're going to keep going with this. It's not having the impact that we'd like it to have, so we need to continue to look further out there.
So is there a number, there's an average number that I think she was asking for?
Five to seven years.
Five to seven years, yes, sorry.
Thank you. That's what I needed, the clarification I needed. Okay. Thank you.
I have two comments. One, your state standards also changed during those five to seven years.
Yes.
Secondly, no one would ever, in my opinion, spend down their savings account. So that is not, in my opinion, a viable option to spend your fund balance to zero, and that's not what you're suggesting, so I'm not going to say that, but words in your mouth. But that also, if you remember from our retreat, the suggestion was you review your budget twice a year. So some of those, I won't call them, I think you called them repurposing items that were in the budget, like remodeling a building at the, I'll call it OATS. Some of those costs, if, one, if they haven't been done, two, may be put off. If, if curriculum is crucial, then there's a lot of, I mean, we need to do some total reviewing the budget before we make our, our decision.
And so something that we're doing in our department is looking at all of our budget lines and looking where we are to see where we can transfer funds back into that line item to ensure that we can just keep adding.
Right. But I always say, state law says we're responsible for the budget. So if we're ultimately responsible, then we need to do our homework.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I just had a comment. I wanted to thank you, because I too had an opportunity to come and look at some of the materials. And thank you for your opening statement, because too many people had put out that we already voted on it, and that was not true. So unlike Mr. Trump, fake news, I can borrow that from him, it was fake. But thank you for giving us the information that you gave us, because I taught for 30 years and in social studies, we met, we went too many years with old books that had been written on, tore up, beat up, trying to, and, and thank you for the data that you gave us. So at least we can look and see, because past administration didn't do it. And we're trying to look at it now and take a hold of it and do something and get up to date. That's important. And I also like the fact that he showed us some things that we can get, people still use books, because they do it in college. They haven't changed that format, as well as you showed us our parents can go online. So at least, I'm old school, I'm a dinosaur, give me a book. But for the new schoolers, they want it all techie. You had that too. So you can operate on both levels, and that's important, because I might not be able to do this, but if you give me a book and show me what you're doing, and I have your agenda, whatever, we can make this work. So I do appreciate what you've done, and thank you.
You're welcome. Our goal is to be as transparent as possible, and then ensure that we're advocating for our students and our teachers to make sure they have what they need to do the best job that they can. So, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Awesome.
So now we're ready for bond update by Mr. Covington?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to back up. We have to go, we did a refresher. We're now ready for our community comments.
Yeah, that's right.
And first, before we do that, I want to make sure that everyone understands how these are going to be presented, that we have rules for speaking. Persons are eligible to participate in this at our board agenda and must adhere to these following rules and procedures. At the beginning of your remarks, we're asking you to state your name. The speaker's address and telephone number shall be recorded on a roll to be maintained by the board clerk. The requirement will permit the board to direct their concerns to the proper school official for response and follow-up. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes, which may include questions by the board. Speakers will be timed and advised when their time has expired. Extentions may be granted upon the majority vote of the board. Speakers may only address the board about policy-related issues and general community concerns. No derogatory or critical remarks about specific district personnel or students can be allowed, they are prohibited. These matters are deemed confidential and must be presented to the appropriate administrative personnel. Similarly, district personnel may not bring personal matters, personnel matters to the board at this time. There are established and complaint and grievance procedures which are designated to address such matters. If there is a hot issue, speakers will be encouraged not to duplicate the remarks of others. Instead, speakers should seek to introduce new points and/or perspectives so that everyone's concerns may be heard. If a person wishes to discuss a topic that is already on the board agenda, the speaker's comments will be deferred until that item is called for discussion. The speaker will be permitted to commit as determined by the board president or presiding officer. The speaker must adhere to a three-minute time limit. So with that being said, we will now have Carolyn Chambers to come forward.
I'm Carolyn Chambers, and I am a teacher from Welborn Elementary School. But for a moment, I'd like for you to just let me step out of that row. I approached, well, I requested to approach the board only to just bring something to your attention that is pretty important, and I'm really excited. So every summer I do research, and I'm always researching Black history before slavery. And one day I ran across this law, and I thought it was kind of strange, so I didn't believe it. So I looked at it again. So in 2018, President Donald Trump signs 400 Years of African-American History Commission Act into law. And what this does is, this law brought about a committee, and this committee was commissioned to bring about celebrations that had to do with African-American, or rather, people of the diaspora history, those histories. And it's to last a whole year. And I went, whoa, a whole year? What's the big deal here? And I kept thinking, 400 years from slavery, that is a big deal. It is. It is a really big deal. So I did sit on that for a little while, and I didn't say anything, and I waited for the district, and I was all excited. Nothing came about, and I'm thinking, let me go to the district website. And I look on there, sure enough, there's African-American history, but I don't see anything about 400 years. So then I decided, well, maybe people just are not aware. And then, so I did a little more research. And so I found this 1619 project that the New York Times is doing. Now, the 1619 is sort of tied to this, because in Virginia, they were already having some celebrations around August the 20th. And so the August the 20th then tied into the 1619. Now, we know that 1619 is not probably, more than likely, the year. But we, but we have adopted this to make a celebration. And so I have one minute to ask you, or to challenge you, to change our district webpage to include that 400-year celebration. I also would like to challenge you to form a committee or to look into, we have a representative that is on that committee in Topeka, to see how we can celebrate. that is on that committee in Topeka, to see how we can celebrate, because we don't know how, because we don't really know those histories.
Okay, your time is up.
So, we're depending on this 1619 project to help us know those histories. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Joseph Macklin with Community Commitment. Good evening.
You needed what information?
I need your name and your address and phone number, please.
Joseph Macklin, address 6427 Troop, Kansas City, Kansas, 913-208-1325. I'm going to be short. I'm a product of Wyandotte County. I was born and raised, and pretty much raised by a lot of these people that are sitting in the crowd, and a lot of them are our teachers. They were more than teachers for us, they were family members, they were friends, they were counselors, they were consultants, and a lot of things for us. And there's been a big disconnect, I believe there's a big divide happening within this community with the school board. And so, I'm trying to figure out, what is the disconnect, and why is there? Why aren't qualified people from this county granted fellow, the fellowship and grants and all these other things to be teachers and be in the community, to be productive? I'm seeing a lot of people from the outside coming in, instead of being people from inside that have been with this community, that are going to be with us. Because when it's all said and done, and those that don't live in this community, you leave, all that's left is us to rebuild. And so, so when I'm getting DMs and a large number of calls and emails throughout my day about my hometown that I love and I respect and I walk with pride, about how there is a lack of respect for the community, for the staff, for our teachers, they're not being protected, we have a big issue, and we can't ask our kids to be everything that they need them to be if there's a divide from the top. If we are in division with each other, with teachers being in division with administration, it's not going to work. There's got to be a solution. We have to do something that's very productive. We shouldn't be able to, people of this community shouldn't be blocked out. We should have a voice, we should be very productive. There are people that look like me, I have, I pose a question to you, how many people like me do you see lined up to serve the community, to teach these kids on a daily basis, ready to serve? I can name you five teachers, probably that are in this crowd right now. They served this community with their hearts. They've given their own money, they've given their own time, they've taken away from their own children to be able to implement into somebody like me to be able to have success in my life. So, there is a big disconnect and a big divide that we have to figure out. We are engaged, and we're here to tell you that we're very engaged. This is all we have, and we are not going to stop until this gets corrected. These kids need us, they need us to be on point, they don't need us to be in division. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Earl Watson. Not giving my address, not giving my phone number unless the board want to take responsibility on my celebrity status in being robbed. Do we understand that? Okay. I've got a quote for you, all right? A workspace that does not allow its workers to have a voice, it's not a workspace, it's a cemetery, it's a dictatorship, it's communist. We do not live in that community. Three things I want to talk to you about: leadership, resources, reflection. Leadership, it's a great book for the, you know, intelligent people who have all these degrees, it's a great book for you. It's called Power vs. Force by Dr. Hawkins. Leadership is a part of that book. Power enables and enhances the voices of those who do not have. Force is when you silence them. And when you have force, you have retaliation. That retaliation comes in people like me. I stand for these teachers, I stand for their voice, I hate bullies. I'm from 59th Street, right down the street, and where I'm from, bullies get bullied. I don't allow it. Resources, they do not have enough resources. Our schools are overcrowded, and our teachers do not have the support of you. So, when you come into the classroom and you make them cry in front of their students, how do they have the trust of their students to continue for the rest of the year? And if they're not doing it the right way, then you take a week and you show them how, you teach. All right? The last thing is reflection. I love this community. I was born in Wyandotte County, I went to public schools my whole life, I graduated from the number one public school in the world, UCLA. Graduated from the number one public school in the world because of a woman outside of my family named Ruth Gohin. She was a counselor. She saw something special in me, that my family told me I was special, but it's different when it comes from a teacher who is on the first line of the community. This is not the first line. This is the inner, and the outer can't be greater than the inner if you want the outer to be successful. I'm done after this. Last thing I'm going to say, I do not envy your position, it's a hard position, but when I see the people that raised me, and the reason why I'm successful is because of these teachers and these educators, who are the number one most important people in this world, I'm going to always be here, and I've got a lot of time to come back again. Thank you.
Dr. Faust, Board Chair Drew, and Cabinet. I am Angelin Howell. My address is 2517 North A Street, my cell number is 816-529-7873. I am a parent of Northwest Middle School. I am here representing my daughter, her friends, and the staff. I am here to formally request and inform the district of the happenings at our school. We have lost two leaders in our building, our principal, our vice principal, which are both Black men. Our students have lost morale and their direction, their support system, the people who know them, who helped them find their way, and they know them. The students are requesting they both be returned to Northwest to finish out the year. Northwest has 940 students, which is 240 over capacity. We have 44 teachers, nine support aides, an interim principal, one vice principal, and lately, some fill-ins that students don't know. Our permanent security officer is now gone, and we now have a revolving officer shared with two other schools, 50 to one, and I wanted to ask you, how is that fair to our teachers? I ask you, why is Northwest understaffed and so neglected? Which brings me to my next point. The eighth grade has been without a reading and math teacher since September of 2019. They also have not had a certified reading teacher since the sixth grade, and they are now eighth graders. I ask you, as educators, how do you allow 180 students to be underserved this long? I have asked and requested, and there has not been a response. What is your expectation for our students to learn with no teachers? What will the test scores look like without a teacher? And sadly, Northwest is not the only school who has been missing a permanent teacher since September. I ask you, as educated educators, who is going to help my child and the other students get the year of lost learning because they have not hired a permanent teacher in the building?
You have one minute.
Is it not your responsibility to see that all of our students at least have the foundation of a teacher? We, as parents, have heard the excuses, the students have tolerated the lack of education. Now, we all expect some change from you. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Carolyn Wyatt for North, in relation to Northwest Middle School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Carolyn Wyatt, 359 Troop, KCK, 66101, 913-787-5385. And I was here maybe a couple weeks ago, and give you information, and I'm not sure what has come with that, but they need stable security at Northwest for over 900 children. Also, there was a tape out about a fight that happened at Northwest. So, I was wondering, have you all seen that tape where the parent was not involved in the situation? If you haven't, we will get that to you. Also, we need accountability for students, parents, teachers, and administrations and principals. How have the staff changed at Northwest? What support has been put in place? Also, has the classroom size changed from 45 children in a class and some 35? Also, any changes from students or parents been escorted? Like, when you go to a school, are you escorted out, or do you leave on your own? So, has that changed, or is that the way in every school? You know, what actually happens? I know whenever I go to schools, I go in, I go to the office, and I leave on my own. So, when something happens, like a fight, and the parents decide not to go out the door, and they go to a room and a fight breaks out, so I would just, that's what's that, that's about. Okay, how concerned are you for these students, for your teachers? And if there are a lack of teachers, the kids can't be successful. And if this has happened from the beginning of school to now, what is going to be put in place, or what has been put in place? So, I'm just reiterating when I came before about any changes, if they have changed or not. If they're not, that's something that should be put in place, because school is almost out. A lot of kids are going to be behind just because they had too, too many kids in a classroom. It should be no more than 20 kids, no more than 25, and that's a lot of kids, to be in a classroom. If you've got double that number, parents should have been flowing all over this building. You know, because when the grades go home, you know, you know, you're going to have results, and the results aren't going to be good. So, how concerned are we?
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. Basically, I've said everything I need to say, and just wishing success for the school, Northwest Junior High School, and every school, because every kid is important.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Laron Thompson. I live at 7101 Verde Drive, like the color green in Spanish, V-E-R-D-E Drive, Kansas City, Kansas, 66109. My phone number for the record is area code 913-808-7601. I stand today to address the board with regard to graduation times in our district. To my knowledge, there are two schools that will host graduations at 10:00 a.m. during the weekday. In my conversations with community members, in my conversations with students, and in my conversation with parents, that is unacceptable for us to put a cost on celebrating the success of our students. To my knowledge, one of the reasons that was given, and I've detailed that in my letter to you, is that we're trying to save cost for our students or for our district with relation to the building rental at Memorial Hall. From the research I've done, that's approximately $500 to $750 each session for graduation. That is a very minuscule cost to pay for the success of our students, to celebrate them at 7:00 p.m. on an evening or 10:00 a.m. on a Saturday morning. Done other research comparable to other districts, similar to Kansas City, Kansas School District. Shawnee Mission School District has five high schools, six high schools. On Tuesday, 7:00 p.m., Shawnee Mission, each will graduate. Wednesday, Shawnee Mission North, it's detailed on your paper. Olatha Public Schools all have evening graduations. Houston Independent School District, there's a list in there, also all has evening school district graduations. And Humboldt Independent School District also has evening graduations. It is incumbent upon this board to help make a decision that is in the best interest of our students, to celebrate this milestone in their life of achieving their high school diploma, so that we can send them off properly to go and pursue higher education. I yield my time. Thank you so much.
And now, we'll have Anna Lio coming forth, please. Anna Lio.
So short, I didn't even see that from the back. My name is Anna Lio, Leal. My address is 940 N Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, 66101. Phone number, 913-3264-657. I am the PTA President at McKinley Elementary, PTA Treasurer at Central Middle School, and the watchdog, watchdogs, Datsup grade students coordinator at Central Middle School as well. I have a few ques, a couple of questions. On behalf of these parents from middle school students, I want to say, why, when students are being, when students are bullying other students and smuggling drugs inside the school, it seems that they're not facing serial, serious consequences. It seems that they're coming right back into the school, and they're retaliating against the students who had the courage to report the problem, and now, not only are the students being afraid of them, but teachers as well are being threatened by the families of these kids who are smuggling drugs into the schools. My question is, what strategy or system is being used for behavior or social behavior in schools for students and teachers? Is the board using a trauma-informed care in the schools, which is something we really need? Another thing, who is keeping this, all these substitutes accountable? How is it going to impact our kids' grades at the end of the year, when all year round, they have had people who are not certified, even IEP help that is not certified? How is that individualized education plan, which is the IEP plan, at Central Middle School being enforced with IEP teachers overloaded with work? There's only four IEP teachers. According to the amount of IEP students, there should be at least seven to 10 IEP teachers. When teachers ask about, these IEP teachers ask if they, they should prioritize and help the students individually, because it is an individualized education program, it seems like the board are very interested in demanding paperwork from them, even though this paperwork neglects our students.
You have one minute.
A lot of attention has been put into test scores, and it seems to me that it's more of an academic tracking for our students, and a lot of these students are not being helped or being of any benefit to them in any kind of way, and this is what I wanted to ask the board. Thank you.
We'd like to thank those who were representing the community, coming forward and presenting their information in response. A response will be given to you. At this time, we now.
Madam Chair, again, that was the reason I suggested that the board and the superintendent plan two community conversations because this format does not allow any exchange. So whenever we get to that point.
Thank you. We're now ready for board updates. Mr. Covington.
The update will be rather quick.
Just a moment, just a moment.
They seem to be leaving. Take maybe five minutes.
Okay, we're going to, could I get a motion that we take five minutes? And then we'll resume at five minutes till the hour.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we will take a break for five minutes, and then we'll resume at five minutes till seven. Thank you. It's time for us to resume, please. So at this time, we are now ready to have the bond updates. Mr. Covington, we're ready for you. Mr. Covington. Thank you.
Superintendent, board members. We're going to bring you the bond update. It's nearing completion of the work that we got going on. And my illustrious team from Jay Dunn are behind me, and they will bring you up today.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President, distinguished board, and Dr. Faust's staff, and, well, the remaining community. It's a privilege and an honor, and I'm excited to be here to give you the bond update for Mr. Moore who could not be here. Prior to, before we get into the packet itself, I want to give a few updates on other activities that we are working on for the district that is not a part of the packet. Of course, as you, I believe, know, we've got six elementaries that we are currently procuring materials on, scheduling and planning for the summer work, meeting with the staff at each individual elementary and making those plans. We've also got three elementary schools, or I'm sorry, three middle schools that will be renovating this summer. We're doing the same, procuring materials, getting all the trade partners on board, and making the plans to get that to have another successful summer. Here in about a week, we're going to start digging the footings for the maintenance facility. And so next month, for the month of March, we'll have an update on the progress of the maintenance facility. So you have in the packet a financial report. That report has not changed from the last board member, board meeting. It is the same. So we'll dive into West Park Elementary. It is going strong. It is on schedule. We are painting where it finishes. We are doing ceilings. We are doing lights. As soon as the weather allows, we'll be starting and finishing our site work with our sidewalks. We currently have scheduled to have all site work or all sidewalks done by the end of March, if weather allows. And then we'll be doing landscaping, irrigation, and hopefully turning the brown dirt green with grass. This past week, we did have the privilege of having the teachers of Willamette and White and other teachers that are going to attend West Elementary take a tour of the building, and was able to show their new facility, and I believe they was very excited. Mr. Clemens was involved in that tour, and so it was a great opportunity to have them to see where they're going to be. I'm also happy to report at West Park, and actually, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I would like to add that to date, we have had one incident, safety incident, on all of the construction work we've done. That incident was a gentleman stepped out of his truck onto a rock and twisted his ankle. He was administered aspirin, so we have to call that recordable. So regardless of the amount of work we've done, it's still a very great feat that I'm personally proud of that we've been this safe on the project. So next, if we go to Lowell Bruny. So you'll notice that Lowell Bruny, the progress on it is eerily similar to West Park. Now, I won't say that the teams might not be a little bit competitive and might be seeing who finishes with the best quality first. But there's a little bit of competitiveness there because they too are doing finishes. They're doing ceiling grid, lights, and doing the casework, and getting eager to start the site work as well, as soon as the, as soon as the weather allows. So they, Lowell Bruny and West Park are neck and neck. So with that, I'm going to introduce Project Manager Daniel Foy, who is the PM on Carl B. Bruce Middle School.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Dr. Faust and Board of Education. Like Jeremy said, I'm Daniel Foy, Project Manager at Jay Dunn. I have the privilege of building Carl B. Bruce Middle School for you guys. Very excited to share a status update on that. Right now, we are planning for the site work to get started next week. With weather allowing, we can turn brown dirt and sloppy conditions this week into something we can walk on and get into school without mud on our feet. Elevators going in so we can get from floor to floor, and it's a major milestone. We're happy to report. Basketball goals went in, so our brakes are making sure they're at the proper height and they work correctly. So we're doing some pick-me-up games there. And we're getting to the point in the project where we can take the gray concrete, the white walls, and put some color on them. So you'll see where we started some painting. And architects do a good job of trying to get every color and the spectrum in these schools. So it really brightens it up. And kind of my favorite part of the project where it turns into the building we're going to give to you guys. We are going to start some traffic signal work out on 18th Street, so you will be seeing that action happening. But we're on schedule and ready to transform the outside, so thank you, guys.
Any comments?
Any comments, questions?
I have a question about Lowell Bruny. Is there a sidewalk that's supposed to be built between the school and the neighborhood that we have not done yet?
I think we want to reserve that discussion for executive if you're going to want to talk about that.
Okay.
I have a question about Northwest. I think for you, Mr. Covington. And I, the discussion with community has gone back and forth. Help me remember what are our plans for the old building?
Just demolition.
Okay. Comments made to me is that it's historic, almost like wine dot, and it cannot be destroyed. So perhaps we need to have verification of that, Mr. Goheen.
I'm not aware of a designation, but we can look and check and see.
I think so. Thank you.
We will check, ma'am.
Also, along with that, due to the spacing issue, have we considered keeping the building? Or is that a demographer thing that we can wait?
Well, we did research that and do with the plans that we submitted to the UG for the building of the new school. To go back and rechange that could possibly slow down the occupancy of the new school. And also, it changes sewer pipes, water regression, a lot of other things that if we make that decision, we may have to go back to the UG to get approval again. So the plan right now is to demolish the school.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much. We're now ready for legislative update. Mr. Brady. Good seeing you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about what's going on in Topeka. Where currently, this is what we call turnaround week in Topeka, which means we're at the halfway point after this year, technically, in terms of numbers. Legislative process doesn't work quite that efficiently, and so we haven't done half the work yet, but we've, we're going to have half the days in. So I guess if I had to give a grade card at this point, it'd be an I because we're incomplete. But the issues we talked about before this session, just to kind of give you a quick summary of where we are. The high density at-risk repeal of the sunset, which is $54 million and is critical to KCK and about 30 other school districts in the state. We have two bills moving. We have a bill at 2540, it's a House bill. That is scheduled to be debated tomorrow in the House. In the Senate tomorrow, we have Senate Bill 271 that'll be debated tomorrow. The House bill has a five-year extension of the sunset. The Senate bill has a three-year extension of the sunset. Unfortunately, it looks like we're looking at not a repeal of the sunset, but just moving the sunset down the road, which is not ideal situation. It's, high density at risk is the only weighting in the formula that currently has a sunset. All the other parts of the formula, there's no sunset. So we had hoped that we would, could get that done, but it looks like five, three years, maybe four. I don't know what the ultimate number we'll come up with is probably where we're going to end up. And, you know, the important thing is to, is to not lose the funding going forward, starting in July. Both bills have, you know, a hodgepodge of requirements, reporting requirements on the part of schools, State Board, and, you know, the education community as a whole has, you know, gone on record and said, you know, really, it's going to add some reporting expenses. But ultimately, I think we're going to end up with, with a number of additional reporting requirements. Mental health pilot is another issue we've been looking at. Of course, there's several school districts, 10 to 12 school districts that are part of that. KCK is one of them. We basically have three different variations. The first one would be just continuation of the pilot into year three with current funding. That's essentially one proposal. Governor Kelly has a proposal which actually provides additional money than the current pilot. It also puts, basically puts some competitive grant, you know, strings on it to try to encourage more competition in the process and try to encourage more providers, mental health providers to engage. Right now, the pilot is solely run, the mental health side of it is run by the mental health centers. And so the governor thinks there's potentially some other providers out there that might engage if given the opportunity. So that's out there. She's provided the resources for her plan and her budget. And then we have House Bill 2582, which would, the authors, Representative Landwear, who's one of the people that originally came up with the idea of the mental health pilot itself. She would provide a weighting for the mental health program, the pilot, to make it basically a permanent weighting in the school finance formula. Unfortunately, there hadn't been a lot of input from schools into that weighting process, and it would call for a permanent 25% cut in the school portion of the mental health pilot as we know it today, if that were to go into law. So it would be a 25% reduction. And it really, most of the weightings in the formula are patterned off of students served. And as opposed to patterning it off of, you know, staff that's part of the intervention team. And so I think there's some thought that, you know, we need to spend a little bit more time. I know there's that in the education community, there's thought we need to spend a little bit more time in terms of, and get more of the players in the process engaged in what ultimately, you know, would be, you know, a new weighting for the formula. But those are the three options. I think at a minimum, we will get, hopefully, year three of the pilot with current funding. State aid for capital improvements. We have two bills in that regard, House Bill 2526, which is sitting on the House calendar. It hasn't run yet. Senate Bill 382 is a Senate's version of that. It's a little broader bill, and it's scheduled for debate tomorrow. And both these bills are positive improvements. And really, as I told members of the House K-12 Committee, it's really the most positive bill that's come out of that committee this year, or at least the last couple of years, for public education. And essentially, what it does, the state has a formula that it provides state aid to districts based on the assessed valuation, student, assessed valuation per pupil for each school district. And so it's a, it's a scale. So as you have less assessed valuation per pupil, the state aid money kicks in more. So you help, number one, you help districts with lower assessed valuation. You help them have the money they need to improve their facilities. And number, I lost my train of thought. The other thing you do is you provide resources to, you know, across the board. So the bill, the law that we have now was changed in 2015, and it was drastically tightened up because some members of, I guess, the majority of legislature that passed the bill thought that, you know, they were, the costs were spiraling out of control. So they tied future state aid to the assessed valuation in the lowest school district in the state, which technically is Fort Leavenworth, which really isn't a school district in the same way that the other 285 school districts are. They have essentially no assessed valuation because they're on federal property. You know, as I understand, they have maybe two or three businesses in their school district. So their assessed valuation is not increasing. And so, so that has an artificial effect of keeping everybody down. And this bill, 2526, that's in the House, would basically delete them from the computation and go to the next lowest school district. And that in itself would pump five to six million dollars a year into the state aid formula. Obviously, the districts that are at the lower end in terms of assessed valuation per pupil would be the biggest winners in that process. And KCK would be, you know, a solid winner if that bill passed. Now, Senate bill, so the House bill makes it perspective. So when the bill would pass, we'd have this new formula. So it would be on all project, bond projects going forward, July 1, 2020. The Senate bill goes back retrospectively back to 2015 and applies the new formula to all those projects, you know, that were in the, that basically, essentially were penalized when the new law went in, in fact, in 2015. That costs $20 million to do, so it's a bigger ticket item. The Senate has it in their bill. And they also have what they call a pay-for. They take the virtual school enrollment in school districts around the state and delete them from the calculation because the theory is, is that virtual school students don't need rook and mortar to the extent of regular students. And so they shouldn't be in the capital improvement state aid formula. So, so we have these two competing bills, but essentially, either one is a positive for this district. So I'm hopeful that we can get one of the other passed this year. We've spent a lot of time, particularly in the House, we've spent time on tuition tax credits and vouchers. And we've got this year's version, 2465 of tax credits. And it's essentially designed, it goes from, allows basically any student at Kansas Public School. designed, it goes from the, allows basically any student in a Kansas public school that's low performing to qualify for, the parents to qualify for a tax credit if they have tax liability. And essentially, we have, we had a bill passed, they allocated, five years ago, they allocated ten million dollars. They've only spent five-point-five annually. That's the largest cost we've had since then. So, the advocates of this proposal, tax credit shifting public school dollars to private schools, they're basically trying to increase the pool of students potentially so there's more families that can draw down the tax credit. That's essentially what they're doing. The voucher bill is really broad this year, and it's on the House, both of these bills are on the House calendar. It's very questionable whether either one will pass the House, but they have passed out of the K-12 Committee. But the voucher bill says that students in the lowest performing quadrant, third and fourth grade students in English, in the English test, statewide test, their parents would be eligible to take that state aid, the base state aid amount that public schools get for that student, could take it and basically purchase tuition in a private school. So, again, that's basically shifting public dollars from the public school to the private school. So, so whether, I have real doubts that that bill will pass out of the House. If it does, it'll have tough going in the Senate, and then, I'm sure Governor Kelly will have a thing to say about it as well. So, it's got a long ways to go. But those are issues that, you know, we're watching and actively engaging in. And I just mentioned, there's other, there's a ton of other issues out there. There's the tobacco twenty-one issue, which has a ban on vaping products in public schools in that bill. Twenty-four sixty-one is the AG's bill that would limit the ability of local units of government to file lawsuits based on contingency fees, and that would affect the current process that's going on. A lot of districts are joining in some vaping lawsuits around the state. And then, twenty-five oh seven, which is actually the House debated today and advanced it to final action tomorrow, and that would talk, would basically allow, would require that school districts assume the liability for students that go into work programs as like shadows and would not require it if the school district could not purchase liability insurance, which KSB has done some research and found that there's really not a market for schools, even if they wanted to purchase it, to find a policy that would provide liability insurance on a student in a workplace, you know, as opposed to the workplace employer providing liability insurance, like trying to shift it to the school. So, that bill's got a ways to go, but it has, you know, advanced to the full House. And I think it'll be voted on final action tomorrow. So, those are, those are issues I just wanted, there's others I could have brought up, but I'm sure on time, but I'd be glad to respond to any questions you have about any of these issues. We're probably, you know, we're halfway through in terms of number, we're probably twenty percent of the way through in terms of the work that needs to be done. And it's really been slow because of the, kind of the dichotomy we have going on between the constitutional amendment on abortion and Medicaid expansion and the leadership's insistence to try to tie the two issues together that really, in my opinion, aren't related. But that's what we're dealing with right now on a daily basis.
Thank you. Any questions?
Got one.
Okay.
Define evidence-based programs?
Evidence-based programs are adopted, they're submitted, they can be submitted by the school districts to the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education, Department of Ed, and then the, ultimately, the State Board of Education approves them, puts them on a approved list, and then they are available for school districts to utilize. That was kind of some of the conflict with the at-risk study, LPA at-risk study, because the, the, the LPA study took, complained about the lack of, what they called the lack of oversight by the State Board in terms of approving, you know, those, not being more hard and fast with approval of those evidence-based courses. And of course, then what the State Board said was, you know, they kind of want this to come from the ground up to a certain extent, and they want, you know, educators to bring programs that are working. It might be a case where, you know, you have a whole array of programs that you're utilizing in the districts, and what works with one child might not work with another, that sort of thing. But ultimately, they have to be approved by the Kansas State Board of Education.
Because the language in these bills state that the state, it has to be on the State Board list before you get the funding for it. And then, what's the impact of the voucher bills, the expansion one especially? We may not be able to get the reading one, but that first tax credit is already law.
Yeah.
So, we're just expanding. They are expanding it.
Yeah.
We don't have the numbers to stop it. What's, what's the potential impact, negative impact?
Well, the law, the current tax credit is capped at ten million, and the most we've seen in five years is five-point-five. So, right now, the law says that only students, families are eligible if the students are in the lowest performing a hundred elementary schools. So, that's, that's a much limited, smaller pool than every student in an elementary school in this public school in Kansas. That's a huge number. So, the intent clearly is to expand the pool so they can get to the ten million, and then, I'm sure they'll come back whenever they do that and say to the legislature that, you know, we need to expand the ten million. It may be fifteen million or twelve million, I don't know what the number is. So, ultimately, it's a step in trying to broaden the program.
Yeah. The point I'm making, we could not amend it out, but that potentially someone, a parent from a Sumner student, any student, could say, I want to pull them out, go to a public school, and how does the funding money play out?
The voucher, that would be, well, the voucher would be the, if the student is in the lowest performing third and fourth grade.
No, 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 with the tax credit, where there, where there's no limit on the school.
Yeah.
And it had to be a low performing school, it's any school.
Yeah. Well, they'd pull them out, and then they'd get a, when they filed their taxes for that year that they pulled them out, they would have a tax.
Credit.
Tax credit against their liability.
With all the weights that that school, that student carries.
If they had the tax credit for it.
Right.
If they had the tax liability for it.
Right.
That percentage, I believe it's like thirty to forty, thirty to forty percent. I'd have to check. It's not one-hundred percent, but it's thirty to forty percent.
So, those are, there's little zigzags that could potentially hurt.
Yeah. And you don't, it doesn't have to be the parent, that's the other thing, is that, you know, you could get, you know, a private school could recruit people with tax, don't, you know, that had tax liability, they could recruit those folks to sponsor a child. So, that's the other thing. It doesn't have to be the, it doesn't have to be the guardian or parent of that child.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to note, I really appreciated the support when we had the December meeting, or I guess we had in January this year, the pre-session.
Yes.
And we had several boards there. KCK had by far the biggest attendance of any board, and I've had two or three legislators comment. I'm gonna make sure I go next year because the board was there, so it really does, people notice that.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate that very much.
We appreciate it.
And I want to thank you because you're always available for last-minute closet conversation.
Thank you.
Closet. Okay, now, we're ready for our committee updates. I just want, our purpose is to implement a good process to address policies within our district, to promote accountability and establish a strategic plan to accomplish our goals. We want to rely on diligence, thoughtfulness, and the committee's recommendations. And so, with that, our finance committee will be made up of Dr. Valdina Nguyen, Dr. Stacy Yeager, and Mrs. Yolanda Clark. Our academics committee will be made up of Ms. Janie Humphries, Ms. Wanda Brownlee Page, and also Mr. Randy Lopez. And so, they will be setting up a time in which they will be meeting and to look at the policies, and then they will bring it back to the board, and then we will make a decision as a board. And we just want to make sure everyone is in, knows what's going to take place.
Madam President, I would like to recommend that the policies, we had tabled that, that we add two to three policies per meeting for the board to discuss.
Okay.
So that we can properly move through the policy recommendations that were given to us. So, again, my recommendation is that we add two to three policies each board meeting so that we may begin to look at them.
Could I ask again, why, what is the reluctance to establishing a policy committee so that there could be some of that discussion, just as you are having a finance committee and academic committee? You don't feel the, I'm having a challenge on why one wouldn't have a policy subcommittee.
I think the goal was because so many of us was interested in the policies, and we wanted to have a detailed discussion with all the members, that we, I think, last time we talked about it, all of us had thoughts about the policies. So, I think the intent, Madam President, I don't want to speak.
No, go ahead.
Is that we are all able to look at them and have a thorough discussion, rather than just have three people come back, recommend they pass, rather than all board members really looking at them, because this is our policy. So, we really need to take our time to look at them and talk about them a little more in depth.
Okay, then I would, would request that if we're doing policy A, B, C, D, and E, F, then we post that two weeks in advance before we have a discussion.
And I had.
Discussion.
And I had talked to Susan about that, because on some other board, they have like upcoming items that you can list under it, and I asked her if it's possible for us to add the upcoming items underneath it. And she said that it is possible for her to put them there. So, I agree that we should know what's coming up and have them chunked out so we have time before the regular agenda to be able to look through them.
And we recognize that a lot of them have to do with the timeframe, so we wanted to make sure that we deal, handle things decent and in order. So, could I, could I get it seconded, please, that we accept the committee updates of having the finance and academics?
Second.
Any discussion?
The recommendations.
I thought you did.
But it wasn't.
Okay.
Okay.
Repeat your, excuse me, Susan, could you please repeat what the recommendation was?
To add two to three policies per board meeting for the entire board discussion. That's what I understood it.
Okay. And so, could I get it seconded, since the motion was made?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that we have three policies per meeting to address, two to three policies per meeting to address. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Could you do a roll call, please?
I don't know what I'm, correct. I know what I'm voting on, but if it's aye or no, I'm in favor of us adding it to the right term, term is what I couldn't come up with.
Maxine Drew?
Yes.
Janie Humphries?
Yes.
Randy Lopez?
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Yes.
Alvin Nguyen?
Yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion's been passed.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the library human resource report and recommendations as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and submitted by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
She's not here, she's out of town.
I make a motion that we approve the human resources and recommendations of the Kansas City Public Libraries.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the report of the library. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Recommend that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the payment of bills for the public libraries as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we approve the payment of bills for public libraries.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the payment of bills for the public library. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. We're now ready for the consent agenda.
Minus.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
What about the additions to the?
Just a moment. Susan, have you put those?
We can do them under communications, we can do them, it's up to you guys.
But I thought you, they were executives.
The one, the Teresa one was not.
The two executive sessions that we added.
Okay. The discussion on KISA?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, that would be added to the, you want to add it to the consent agenda?
No, no. These are like communications.
Oh, under communications, okay.
There's three different, three ones, three items that we've added, so we can do them under communications.
Okay, so, let's, let's do that now.
Under communications.
Under communications.
You're kind of going out of order.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I thought that, my mistake, I'm sorry.
Communications is number ten, I think was Susan suggested.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I think there were three things added to the agenda, all within that.
Is that right?
So, we're ready for the consent agenda?
Minus item E.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus item E.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda minus item E. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the.
I probably need to leave the room.
Oh, that's right.
Or accuse myself of this conversation. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so, we're ready to discuss, am I correct with, Susan, with item E?
Yes.
Okay.
Approve that.
Of agreement with family healthcare and provide dental services. Any questions or comments or discussion? Could I get a motion, please?
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Do we have, we have a MOU with Vibrant Health now, provide some dental services and mental health? Am I correct?
Do.
How, how, how is this, how are they going to work together?
Good evening.
So, we do currently have a memorandum of agreement with Vibrant Health, and we are also requesting a memorandum of agreement with FHC as well.
Are they gonna, how many schools have Vibrant Health in them now?
So, there are a total of, what, twenty-two thousand eight hundred students? Is that what we have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, they are able to work with any students that, was it Medicaid and Medicare billing? Is that what they're doing? And so, if we look at our free and reduce, we're currently at seventy-four percent. And so, what is actually happening is that what we've found is that we need to make sure that our students have all the resources and not just limit it to one or two, but if their issues are just like multiple doctors, that's all it is. It's nothing that we're taking away from anyone, we're providing more resources. And so, for instance, I had asked earlier for the company if they could do what's considered an immunization truck.
That'd be good.
Crickets. So, we have students who have not received their immunizations, and so, if you know by law, they can't actually be in schools. So, if they're not able to get them, so then, if their parents can't get them to a clinic, they can't get them somewhere else, I don't know.
Having both.
Both companies working with us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was just curious if it was we were losing one and gaining one?
No.
Or if we were expanding our opportunities?
We're expanding. We would have two.
Okay.
Are there other providers that are out there?
That's a good question. Vibrant has been with us, I think, since the last school year, and then FHC came to us at the beginning of this school year. So we could definitely look in to see if there are others that would be willing to partner with us.
Thank you.
So may I get a motion, please, that we approve the memorandum of agreement with family healthcare to provide dental services?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. We're now ready for payment of bills?
Before we do that, Madam Chair, did I ever get a response back from the payment of the Kansas City Royals or something? Is it in the library?
I thought we posted it to the library. I'm not 100% sure, but I would check.
Okay. Because I didn't...
But it was...we took a group of fifth graders on a field trip to the Royal Stadium. I'll make sure it's in the library. I thought he had submitted it.
I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the payment of bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, we're now ready to go into executive session. And so I'll need a motion for the board to recess to executive session at 7:40, and we need 30 minutes to plan for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer/employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meeting Act. And the open meeting will resume at?
8:10.
8:10.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, we're now ready to go into executive session. And so I'll need a motion for the board to recess to executive session at 7:40, and we need 30 minutes to plan for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer/employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meeting Act. And the open meeting will resume at?
8:10.
8:10.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you. We'll resume and get back into session. She said what?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we recess for executive session. Oh, that we come back into open session. Thank you. I'm sorry.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Could I get a motion for the board to recess to executive session at 8:25 for 10 minutes under the Kansas Open Meeting Act to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the party involved? The board will return to open session at 8:35.
We'll go back into open session.
We will...
And the open session will...
With no action to follow. And we'll go back into open session in the boardroom for the next one.
So moved.
I need seconded?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Can we come back in session, please? Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume into our meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. We're now ready for communications with Dr. Faust. Oh, I'm sorry. We have one other addition, which is a discussion on KISA.
I was in Topeka on Wednesday, and they were explaining to me about KISA. And I brought a copy of their outside visitation team report from last year that I had been asking for. It's not a bad report. It shows what we need to work on, which the one we got the year before said too. But I thought it was good for us all to see that so that we understand part of it. They also gave me a copy of the new manual. It's been changed from last year. So if you want, I'll leave it with Susan, and she can make a copy for everyone. That way, when they come to talk with us in April, we'll have some background before they get here. I think it's much easier to read than the first one was. But it's something that we are going to have to really dive into, because we have two years before we come up for accreditation. And the other thing is, they told me we still don't have an outside visitation team, and I wanted to know what the progress was. I'm getting one together, because I know that Dr. Faust is the person who picks that team, the superintendent. And we're supposed to have a visit in March and April from that team for this process. So I just wanted to know what the process was, or progress was on getting that team together.
So that was...that's not the actual report. That's the summary of what they brought to us. So the problem was is that they didn't fulfill what they were supposed to do. If you've ever sat on an accreditation team, you'll notice that they were supposed to go out to the schools, and they had schools come in and bring artifacts. So what was happening is we had people who were supposed to have been trained from the state that they didn't fulfill their attributes. So what happened was they had...I remember one school was Emerson, and so Emerson would present, and they would clap. And so I was like, well, you can't clap. You have to give feet...you have to be a non-biased person. And then they told us that, you know, because they were doing, I think it was the two Rs, the rigor and relevance, they didn't follow...there is also in there...there's another one in there that talks about the...there's a rubric. They didn't follow the rubric. Then the individual, they didn't follow the form. They were supposed to sit down and have a teacher form. The older lady who was there, she called people on the telephone. And then they could not tell us who she called, and then she just got...she wanted to know, well, how do you like the new superintendent? Those were her questions. So you'll find that in that report. So what I did is then I had them come in and say, tell me how you arrived with this information. And the chairman could not vouch for the information, to the point where he got so nervous, he tried to escape through the closet instead of going through the door, because I also had the state on the telephone. He kept saying, well, you can start over. The state said, no, 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 you cannot start over. And so why would you tell them that you can start over? You're the chairperson. You know that we can't start over. So we are in year three. Remember, when they did the very first one, you were at 10 percentage points proficient. We are currently projected to be at 22%. So my question is, and to them, why wouldn't you be accredited? We've made double-digit growth. I'm holding them, that team, to the standards of what the state asked them to do. They were supposed to come in and tour our schools, give us honest feedback. They did not do that. We sat back, and this was the conservatory. We fed them. They sat around, and they just had us bring highlights. That's what they asked. Just bring us work samples. That's not how it's supposed to go. I've sat on those teams before. They have to go in the building. They have to sit down. They have to have a parent forum. They have to have...some have student forums, some had teacher forums. They have to have non-certified forums. They had none of those. She picked up the telephone and called people. Now, in that book, I want you to find...not you, but I want the board to find where it says, pick up the telephone and call your friends and ask them, how do you like the superintendent? Because that's not actually what's in there. So then they ask, well, since you're going in a different direction...I said, well, we're not actually going in a different direction. We are focusing on the sta...excuse me, the standards. I said, well, you should start over. I said, well, we can't start over. We're focusing on the standard. That's what accreditation is all about. So the reason why you couldn't get Michelle, and she's the Assistant Director of Teacher Lysenger, who we have spoken with, she's the person who's going to come. I also spoke with Michelle Hayes, who was with KLN, who was supposed to have been on the team, but the old team did not invite her. So she said, hey, I just realized that you were having a meeting with them. She said, I didn't get the invite. So I invited her, because she was supposed to have been part of the team. So do you see how many holes and loops were in there? They did not follow the process that was garnered by the state. So then, when they didn't follow it, then they said, well, you know what? You can pick your own team. I said, no, 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 no. Tell me why you didn't follow the plan. You can pick your...Dr. Faust, we're not going to satisfy your questions. That's what they said. You pick your own team. I said, I want to know why you didn't follow the process. And he would not answer my question. I said, you did not follow the process. So at that point, Michelle Hayes, who is with the state, KLN, reached out to Lysenger, and Lysenger told us to disband the team. The state told us to do that, not Charles Faust, because they chose not to follow what we were supposed to be doing. So that's why I was like, wait till we get the real summary. Wait till we get the real report. If you wait, she's going to come, and what she was supposed to...we thought she was going to be able to come last board meeting. She's booked. She's coming in March. She's going to train the entire board on what the proper policy, what you're supposed to do. There's actually supposed to be interviews with you about the schools. You're supposed to be on a forum. I don't think you've ever actually probably had the opportunity to sit down over the two years.
She coming in March or April?
She's coming April. April, that's when she'll be here. She's going to train everyone. She's going to give you the new book. She's going to talk to you. But this...and actually, we actually write it. That's how, you know, we're going to talk about something. This is their summary of their meeting. They provide us with...these are notes. And then we write the actual plan. That's where that goes.
Do you have a team assembled for the spring's visit?
They just...I just got back with Michelle. Remember, they didn't follow the process. So we have a list...they've sent us a list of people. Who do we want to be on the team? There are more people who want us on their team than what...who want to come to us. So yes, we have a list of people. We're working with KLN. If you want to see who those people are, we can actually bring that to the table also. But what I'm saying is this, anyone who is sitting on an accreditation from the state level, I'm going to make sure they follow the plan. And the problem is, I read what they were supposed to do, and they were trying to give shortcuts. And you are not going to talk about our district. You're not going to talk about the poor black and brown kids, and you're not going to skip when you have been authorized by the state to do something to give accreditation, and they chose not to do that. That's the bottom line. They chose not to do it. It wasn't me. I was sitting in there. Alan was in there. Dr. Hookfin was in that meeting. When we were sitting at the table and talking with them, they all got the same message. And the actual chair, who was supposed to have been facilitating, could not answer any of the questions when it pertains to the rubric. There's a state rubric that talks about what rigor looks like. You won't see that in any of this. There's a specific about what relevance looks like. You will not see that in any of their notes. You won't see...I ask again, who was your teacher forum? You won't see that in there. Where was your non-certified forum? You won't see that in there. Where was your principal forum? You won't see that in there. I'm just telling you this, I'm thorough, and you know I'm type A. I'll go ahead and say it, I'm type A. Sure, you knew that. And there note, like, you can't...you're not going to talk about USD 500. You're not going to shortchange us, and you're not going to call people who are your friends and not follow the plan, because I'm going to call you on it every time. And I'll call the state, and I told him, I will call the state superintendent on you if I have to, because you're going to follow the plan. So that's what happened.
But you...
And you can bring him to the table, and he'll tell you the same thing. And I just stated, we...
Have a list.
There's a list that the state, Michelle, not Michelle Hayes, Michelle over teacher accreditation, has given us. These are the names. And all you have to do is, we need to call those individuals, but we have individuals...one is from KLN. Casey is also working with us.
Okay, so we have a plan in place to replace the team. That's what I wanted to update.
But remember, it's a five years. It's five years.
It's a five year.
You're only in year three. Five years.
You have two years to finish this up.
Right. And you are already greater...we've made more progress than where we started. Think about that. We came in at 11. We've already at 12. I mean, literally, you know, you doubled...we have gotten to 12. So the district is...we have to celebrate those things, but what we can't harp on is what people tell us in their ear. Because I tell you, what happens is the proof is in the pudding. It's in the pudding. I mean, you look at the attendance is up. We have more students. We are teaching kids. We're actually having an adoption. I don't even think they actually looked at that. Think about that. We didn't even have books for teachers. That's what they're supposed to be looking at. When they pull all those things, they pull adoption. They have to go through so many things for us. They look at our financial stability. They weren't doing those things. And I called them on the rug.
Any other comments?
So this team that you're talking about should have caught that we did not have books or updated books since 2005 in many areas?
If they had gone and done the teacher forum, the questions that they asked, the principal forum, they would have done things with curriculum. There are...they only met with the cabinet, and that wasn't in a forum. That wasn't...those weren't structured questions.
So when we found out about the situation with the books, it essentially came from our staff.
Oh, yes.
Doing their due diligence.
Suzie and Matt.
And reviewing our standards. So thank you.
Anyone else?
I think it's Dr. Drew.
Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Maxine, your comment?
I don't have any comments.
I would like to comment. Thank you so much for those who came out for our parent as teachers events. Thank you for all of the building and the district staff and leaders who were at those events. I attended a number of them. I was needing interpreter to see what was going on. So, thank you. This is one of the initiatives that we continue to look at, uh, partnering with parents, along with, as, uh, Dr. Win said, to also have our own community forum as a board to build on that partnership. When we came on as board members, one thing that the community said is that we need to be more transparent and be out there and be at the schools, open the schools up, let's have events there. So I was so excited to see that. There's a number of events that I also went to, I went to the tri- um, triathlon for the gifted program, in which students from around our district who are in the gifted program, um, competed with, well, not competed, but with, were with Bonner, Springs, and Piper High Schools to create projects, um, right there at Eisenhower Rec Center. And a number of our students won first, second, and third place, which was excellent. The, the students worked really hard, um, um, on those projects, and I wanna thank Mr. Boris for helping put that together and inviting us out to that event. Um, also, um, our debate teams are doing really well, a number of them placed first, second, and third as well. So around the district, we are seeing so many great things happening. So I just want to continue to encourage us to be present for parents as teachers, and continue to provide that support in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam President, uh, we can segue on the themes of transparency and communication. Board meetings on, on cable. Last time I checked, it was, uh, maybe October. So why aren't our board meetings being aired? And can Mr. Birch respond?
Mr. Birch, could you come forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The board meetings are being shown on YouTube. We aren't showing them on our channel currently, because we are in the process of upgrading our channel. So as we speak now, uh, one of the plans when I came on board, I put together a communications plan. And part of that plan included upgrading this channel. And we are very close to upgrading the system, which we have in place now.
Okay, and, and full transparency, I called you, and we had this conversation, so this is not the new, the first time I've heard this. However, until you get it upgraded, why not air what you have?
Well, as I was mentioning before, we have some difficulties, some technical difficulties with the channel that we have now. The channel and the system we have is antiquated. That's one of the main reasons why we are upgrading the channel and moving forward with that.
Okay. Systems run parallel. Until you get new equipment, you can use old equipment. But everyone does not have, um, internet. So, many of my constituents are senior citizens, they've got cable. So it's, it's, it, what is, you know, we can't keep running this without very much longer. So what's your, you know, May is not, you, you said May, we cannot wait till May even to talk about this, so.
But you know, Dr. Win, I'm really, I'm really excited about this. So when I came on-
Well, good, I like you being excited.
No, no, I'm excited, because we're gonna have a new channel.
When?
And we're gonna upgrade it, we're in the process now, the equipment is ordered.
Oh, it's-
The equipment is ordered, we're gonna be ordering the equipment, and we're gonna upgrade the channel, which we have in place now. This channel is going to be able to provide more access to the videos and the meetings, the videos that we are producing currently, and also provide access to the meetings that we have. And the system will also have video on demand. So even the old, I mean, the meetings in the past, you will be able to access those meetings with this new system.
Okay, so you, you, I heard you say two things. One, you're gonna order, and it's been ordered, which is-
The equipment has been ordered.
Okay, time take.
And then we have to install it.
Time take.
So I could say that the equipment will be in place, ordered, uh, installed within about a month.
Then maybe there needs to be a, a banner on the, on the screen that says, under construction or something, instead of showing something, I mean, the, the programs that have been shown, the new people are not even there.
I understand.
So don't, don't show an October meeting. Show, I mean, I, it, it doesn't make sense. And what I, I don't appreciate is that, why do we have to ask? You know, because it's gonna be a cost, I'm sure, right?
Yes, it will.
It's not gonna be free.
Yes, it will be.
So what's, what, 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 what are we talking about? What figures are we talking about?
We can provide more information with that. I can put some information together and provide that for you.
If you want our approval, I would imagine you would.
Well, the budget was already approved for his department, I'm sure he'll stick within it. But I think the most important thing is not to rush.
Excuse me, Dr. Hager.
Let me finish my sentence, but I think-
You don't, we don't, we don't assume anything when we're talking about budget. And this is, again, transparency to our public, so, I'm good, thank you.
And as I was saying, is that it's important not to rush the technical systems. Um, I can understand that we may want things done sooner, but I prefer that it's done right. When we were transitioning to our website, we did not rush that process, we made sure it was done right. So I think the importance is that we understand that it will take time, and that it needs to be done right, and not just thrown up there. And from what I'm hearing, there is antiquated system, we actually have not been using our studio for a long time. So I appreciate you giving us updates and providing us with additional details, but, um, please, in your efforts to convert, it needs to be done right, instead of being done in a hur-, in a, in a hurried area.
While I, I understand Dr. Hager's comment, when we were to roll out the new website, there was information provided, there were focus groups. You're just now providing this, and, and there has been a reluctance even to allow you to speak. So when I asked you the last meeting, you know, you get halfway to the, to the microphone, and then, then everybody stops you. So, so, um, thank you, Mr. Birch.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Uh, are we doing community?
No, I just got my second issue. Main point this evening, the communication with the community, with the board and superintendent, I believe is important. So I would like for us to either establish some Saturdays, um, before April, or Susan, pull out some dates or something, but before we leave tonight, um, determine two community meetings with open conversation, in the, with the board and the superintendent.
Well, my preference would be for us to wait and set that time up, uh, at our next board meeting, in an executive session, so that we can decide when we want to do it.
I, I don't, we don't-
I don't think that warrants an executive session.
That's my, I'd say, that's, okay.
Doesn't warrant executive session.
All right, well, then, rather than, because, rather than doing it for tonight-
Okay, fine, but it, it cannot be in the executive session.
Okay, well, thank you for correcting me. But I would recommend that we not pinpoint the dates tonight, we can have Susan, uh, submit some dates to us, and then the board members can make a decision, and then we will try to set it up.
And those dates will be submitted by the next board meeting.
And to clarify, are we saying April and May, or?
I said, in, before the end of April.
Two means before-
Correct.
Okay.
One in March, one in April.
However.
Just wanted to clarify.
Correct.
Okay.
Central office.
Central, yeah. Evening, our weekend.
Okay, Ms. Page.
Weekends.
Uh, are we still in communication?
Yeah, we're still in communication.
Good, thank you.
No, I just wanted to say, for those who put together Parents as Partners, it's been a joy, it has been fun, and I think the parents appreciate it, and we just need to keep doing things like this. So if there's problems, we get a chance to hear. Uh, there were some parents who suggested, maybe if we could do one on a Wednesday from four to six, because they're coming to get their kids, they know the early dismissal. Some even suggested, since we have so many people working two and three jobs, and just because they don't come to this, it doesn't mean that they don't care. That maybe we need to try to figure out another way, go to a church, go to a community center, go to them. If they can't come to us, then let's bring it to them. So we wanna make sure that we do everything possible, 'cause it's a good thing, and we wanna keep everyone involved. And, and to see their little faces, and parents were happy, and it's, it's a good thing, it's a good way to open up the communication. 'Cause sometimes when we put the locks on the doors to keep the bad guys out, sometime we keep the good people out too. So we wanna make sure we keep our doors open. Uh, I had the privilege of going to Quandero School, we're gonna do a Black History program for their third graders tomorrow. So if anybody wants to come by, we're gonna do some interactive things with Black inventors, Garrett A. Morgan, uh, Janie Metzellinger, people like that, to try to inspire them and encourage them. And our theme is that they can be superheroes as well. So if anyone wants to come out, we'll be there at 11, be happy to see you there. Also, had a chance to go to the negotiation meeting and sit in, and our teachers are working hard, and hopefully we can work that out. So we might not solve every problem, but at least we can get it where they feel comfortable, and we can all continue to work together. And I wish I could have said this before the majority of parents left, but gear up, we gotta keep pushing that program, so our kids can get involved. And they're, they're helping them also get ready for college. And our special meeting was good, anytime we can all come together, and we're working to work, to get on one accord. Contrary to popular belief, some have described us as being dysfunctional, but that's not true. We have a lot of passionate people who care about our kids and want the best for them. And when you're passionate and you have strong-willed people, sometime, we're gonna disagree, but I think we have enough sense to come together and work for the good of our kids. We're not perfect, but we seek perfection. And we have a lot of good people out there working hard. If we don't say it enough, some people said that we gripe and we complain, but we care, 'cause a lot of us grew up here, we went to school in the system, we just want it to work. So if we didn't say it enough, thank you. We do appreciate what everybody does, we got a lot of hard-working people, but we just gotta continue to work to make it best. 'Cause each one of you, you have your children, they may not be in this system, but they're in somebody's system. You want it to work, we want it to work so badly. So please understand our passion, we just want it to work.
I'd like to piggyback off of what Ms. Wanda said as well, I, the, just bringing the two conversations together, I love the idea of being able to bring our community in. We were able to see today, our community wants to be involved, they want full transparency, they want their voices to be heard, and we cannot ignore when we hear our community. And I hear, um, Ms. Win saying, my people don't have internet, my age group does, and that's how they live, that's how they breathe, they breathe off of social media, and so we need to be aware, and we need to make sure that we're hearing the voices of all. So I like these two conversations, if you tie them together.
I just, uh, just wanna say, Happy Public Schools Week to everybody. Um, I brought cookies, no, I did not make them, so for those of you that are left here still, you're happy, please take them all, I don't wanna take any home with me. But, uh, to that end, and I think to, to piggyback off of Ms. Page, um, thank you to all of our staff and teachers, um, all of our students and parents and community members, because you really are who make our district, um, and make us work and work well. So I just wanna say thank you to, to all of you as we celebrate Public Schools Week, um, and we celebrate you. We celebrate our teachers and staff and, and community, and to, to all of you that stayed, um, all night, um, and for those that had to go home because of other obligations, obviously, right? Uh, but we thank all of you, all of our teachers and staff, so just wanted to say that. I had a chance to visit John Fisk this week, and it was just a really great visit. It's one of those, um, schools just kind of nestled in a community, it's a great school, got to see our bond, um, money, work, put, put to work, and, and the great additions to that school, um, that, that took place, and it's, uh, the culture there is, is great, the, the, the progress they're making. Um, seeing the students high-fiving their principal and their instructional coaches, and, um, their art on display was just really neat. So I, I appreciate all the schools that have reached out and continue to invite me to, to these, um, places. So thank you again to all of our teachers and principals, leaders, um, for the work that you do. Um, I just wanna make a quick note, this Thursday, I know, quick, short turnaround, um, but, um, that, as we all know, the census is coming up on April 1st. Um, it's a huge, huge issue for all of us. Millions of dollars are on the line for our community, for us to make sure that we get a complete count of all of our, of all of our community members. Um, there is a presentation workshop on strategies, um, to, um, help those, um, hard-to-count areas and populations, to make sure that they fill out the census, um, this Thursday at the Reardon Center. Um, and it's in the morning, I believe, from 8:30 to 12. Um, but I, I think that's a great opportunity for us, and as a district, I think, I think it's important for us as a district, we see 23,000 students, we need to make sure each one of them is counted, and their brothers, their sisters, their parents, their grandparents, everybody gets counted. So I think that's our responsibility as well. But, um, I think that's it, so thank you. Don't forget, there are some scholarships out there for all of our seniors, um, and even our, our juniors and, and some freshmen. There are some scholarships that are coming up, coming due at the end of this week, make sure you fill those out, talk to your counselors, teachers, parents, and make sure those scholarships get in, um, by the due date of the end of this week. Thank you.
I wanted to share that I went up to Harmon's Special Ed Life Skills classes last week, and Phil Dixon, who was a graduate of Wyandotte High School-
Class of 74.
Uh-huh, and has written many books on the Negro League baseball, his experience. Came up there and shared an hour with our students, and he did a wonderful job. He is just a wonderful man. He, he engaged with our Special Ed students like I have never seen anyone but a teacher do. I just wanted to be sure and tell him, thank you again for coming and talking with our kids. It was, it was truly the, the highlight of my week. So I was, thank you very much, Phil. I hope to see you at the Crystal Ray baseball game against Harmon.
Ms. Drew, I'd like you to circle back to, to what, Ms. Chambers, I think that was her name, uh, 400-year commemor-, commemoration of enslavement African-Americans in the United States. Um, not quite sure what her message was, or her request was, but if you could, if you have time, could you circle back and see if, if, if she intended to suggest that we do something more than just put a notice on the website?
She, she asked us to partner with, uh, the committee, that the district would partner with the committee to help do something.
Okay.
Yeah.
We need to-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, just wanted to, uh, bring attention to our board retreat that we had on this past Saturday with Dr. Kenneth Wesson, who came to help us be able to look at ways in which we can work collectively together. And I'd like to say that, from the perspective of what I had, every board member did come out of there learning something, and I believe that it has begun to put us on the right path to be able to do what is necessary. And he, uh, gave us a book to read, uh, to be able to take notes, and to be able to work at, as Wanda said, how passionate we are about what we're doing, but to work collectively together. And I wanted to thank those who were present, from, uh, Dr. Faust's cabinet, being there with us, and others. And we are works in progress, but we are going to get where we need to be, and we're going to work collectively together. So again, I just wanted to formally thank, uh, each board member for coming out, and listening, learning, and then putting into effect what we were given through that presentation. Uh, with that being said, uh, for the upcoming events, uh, beginning on tomorrow, there's a Civil Rights Museum from 1:00 to 3:30 at White Church Elementary. On February 29th is the Math and STEM Relays, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Wyandotte High School. And we did get the email late, but if any of you are not doing anything, to just stop in and support our students for this math relay. And we also, um, have several other listings coming up in March, but the, um, I will not, uh, at, focus in on those right now, just those three things for the rest of the month, and we will address those issues as we come through at our next meeting.
Madam President, um, for the committees, did you want, um, Susan to send out dates for the committee meetings as well? I know we have training tomorrow on Alaveu, Alaveu for our financial system, but, uh, did you want Susan to send out dates to us about, uh, when we would start meeting?[1779.96]